The Honorable Counsel of the City of Evansville is hereby called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Chalkman. Councilwoman Mosby.
Here.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey.
Here.
Councilman Brickmeyer.
Here.
Councilwoman Bean.
Here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Weaver. Councilman Hieronymus.
Here. There being six members present, three members absent, and six members representing a quorum, I hereby declare this session of the Common Council officially open. This evening, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fellow councilmen and those in the audience, welcome to the April 24, 2023 Meeting of the Common Council. This evening, Josh Claiborne is the City Council Attorney. Approval of the meeting memorandum, is there a motion to approve the meeting memorandum of the April 10, 2023 Meeting of the Common Council is written?
So moved.
Having a first from Councilman Burton and a second from Councilwoman Mosby. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
So ordered.
Reports and communications, emailed material ordinances G 2023-07, F 2023-05 amended, R, excuse me, F 2023-06 amended, R 2023-09 amended, R 2023-10 amended, and R 2023-11 amended, APC report from April 2023, ERC minutes from March 21, 2023, and 2022 Annual Tree Board Report. On your desks this evening, extended agenda.
Is there a motion to acknowledge the reports and communications?
So moved.
Sir.
Having a first from Councilman Burton and a second from Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey. All those in favor say aye. Aye. So ordered.
Special orders of the day. There are no special orders this evening.
Just a kind of a point of order. If you don't have a seat, I have to ask you guys to stand out in the hallway. We have a fire code that we have to adhere to, but I assure you, you'll be able to hear us speaking. And if anybody leaves, feel free to take their seat as well, too.
Consent agenda, first reading of ordinances and resolutions, ordinance G 2023-07, an ordinance to vacate a public right-of-way in Evansville, Indiana, that part of Hardick Avenue adjacent to Lot 30 and the replat of Lots 60 through 87, inclusive of Shawnee Heights. In addition to the City of Evansville as per plat thereof, recorded on Plat Book I, page 97, in the office of Recorder, Vanderburgh County, Indiana.
Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
Okay. Having a first from Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey and a second from Councilwoman Mosby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So ordered.
Committee reports. Mr. President, the Area Plan Commission submits the following recommendations. Ordinance R 2023-01 comes forward with a recommendation for denial, having two affirmative votes and eight negative votes. Ordinance R 2023-07 is continued to the area plan May 4 meeting. Ordinance R 2023-08. Ordinance R 2023-09 amended. Ordinance R 2023-10 amended, and all, ordinance R 2023-11 amended. All of those come forward with a recommendation for approval, having 10 affirmative votes.
Is there a motion to acknowledge the committee reports?
So moved.
Having a first from Councilwoman Mosby, a second from Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
So ordered. Regular agenda, second reading of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance G 2023-06 amended, and ordinance amending Chapter 3.35 Housing Funds of the Evansville Municipal Code.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance G 2023-06 amended?
So moved.
Sir. I have a first by Councilman Bean and a second by Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey. The floor is now open for discussion among councilmembers.
I'll speak a little bit. Did a little bit of work on this. You know, in our community for some time, we've had some champions and advocates working to see the City of Evansville do a greater job of investing in housing all across the spectrum of need here in the City of Evansville. So last fall, I sit as part of my day job with Aurora on a group called HOUSE, and there's discussion about looking at the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and seeing what is it that we can do to kind of start moving things in a little bit stronger direction, right? We see some investments from our Affordable Housing Trust Funds. We see year in and year out requests for additional dollars to go in it, and a lot of the House members that chose to be part of this spent about six weeks meeting weekly to really discuss, you know, models from other communities, how they're doing there, and can we, you know, reimagine, you know, envision a different model that could work for us. And so collectively, through that bit of work, you know, discussion and debates about, you know, all the merits of every aspect of it, this is kind of what was put together and, for the most part, agreed on by the group to come forward, and I'm bringing it forward to you today.
Councilman Bean.
Well, I called Zach the other day because I had a lot of questions about this, and he was able to answer quite a few of them for me, but I still have, I still have a few questions, and I know that there are lots of 501(c)(3)'s out here that are operating independently, and I understand the fact that trying to get it united to go after bigger buckets of funds, that there's some wisdom to that, and some other communities are doing it and doing it successfully. And, and so, at first blush, I don't really have a problem with it, but the first thing that, you know, that this doesn't address is the timeline from how we're going to transfer from the operation that the current Affordable Housing Trust Fund is doing to a new 501(c)(3). And secondly, as that, if that 501(c)(3) is operating independently as a separate entity that has ability to apply for grants and do those things, I don't really see the framework for how that work gets accomplished, because it's, you know, we have 11 board members, I believe, and all of them, I think, probably have full-time jobs, so I don't know who's actually going to put pen to paper or finger to keystroke to actually put grant applications together, and how, and how we're going to seek them and find them, and how that's all going to interact. And I think that that's, that's an important part of this process. If we want to do this, we have to understand how every bit of paperwork and how every bit of it is going to be handled. You know, if it's something that, do we want to have it go through, make arrangements for DMD to handle that? I think at this point, this doesn't address, as far as I can tell, agreements with them how to, how that would work. So, and I kind of, I'm always of the opinion that conceptually, this might be a good idea, and it might be a target that we go for, but I don't, I don't feel like, that I have all the information I need for the steps, how it's going to actually operate, how the gear is going to mesh, how's the motor going to work, who's going to put the gas in, who's going to check the oil, all of that. That's the concerns that I have at this time.
I can, I can speak a little to that, Councilman Bean. So in the ordinance, it specifically states that the board will be charged with, you know, either creating a position that would be effectively act as the administrator, administrator like other, you know, communities and entities carry out, right? So they have paid staff, right, so they have administrator. Louisville, for example, so they have three staff members, right? They've got two full-time and a part-time. In the ordinance, it says that they can either do that, or they can contract with DMD for personnel or support or whatever it might be, or it could be a combination thereof, right? As, you know, the entity is formed, to your question about the timeframe, and if it's not clearly worded in there, it could be in my head because of all of the conversations we've had and the, you know, the documents for recommendations on how to carry this out, that houses and the entities that were working on this was collectively still working to flesh out, but the idea is that the city will be required to set this up, and then January 1, when funding is placed, in place after this budgeting session, that they will be in position to carry out, you know, development of programs for homeowners, development of programs, you know, grant and loan programs, or otherwise, all up and down the spectrum of housing, whether it's our great nonprofits that are carrying out right now, or, you know, private investors that are wanting to do development as well.
Councilman Burton.
Yeah, for, for this proposal, how much money is already raised or set aside for this proposed nonprofit?
Councilman Burton, there is nothing at this time, because there is not an entity to commit anything to.
For, for ballpark, for, for this, for this matter, how many, how much money ballpark do you think to be raised?
Well, you know, I, I think that depends on, you know, a lot of factors, right? I think it depends on, do they decide to contract with DMD, and is that a full-time person in addition to the duties that they're already doing within DMD? Is it an administrator that understands housing and understands how to strategically align and build partnerships in a community? I, I think, you know, there's a, you know, multitude of things that go into, you know, what that pot's going to look like, but what I do believe is, as it is modeled today, there's nobody knocking at the door to commit to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as it is being part of the city within DMD at this moment.
Kind of following up with, with Councilman Bean, at this point in time, I don't feel comfortable in this move. You know, as we've just let, sat through the financial hearings, financial reports, housing is by far the number one issue that a lot of residents in the City of Evansville have issues with, and to have a couple hundred thousand dollars is not going to move the needle in a way that our community can truly benefit from. I think we really need to take a step back and have the conversations with corporates, with our corporate citizens, the area foundations, and all the housing organizations to get their thoughts on the proposal. I understand that there's been six weeks of conversations, but I'm confident that we as a community can come together to truly improve housing and the options, right? There are too many residents that are literally spending more than half of their paycheck on rent and/or their utility bills. That's problematic. How can we expect families in our community to save money, to go buy food, and just be able to live? And unfortunately, at this point in time in our community, it is incredibly difficult for that to happen. You know, you look at the housing stock, we can't even comfortably accommodate 100 people come moving, trying to move to Evansville. They have to look, if we were, you know, for instance, talk about, you know, Woodland Park, right? We can't, we can't even close the apartment complex down because we have nowhere else to put the residents who are in there. How awful is that? That means that families are forced to live with mold, insects, bugs, all the other things, and because this is Indiana, it's not illegal to live with any of those things. We have a commitment and an opportunity here to not only address housing in full, but to encourage conversation from those who are living this every day. And I think the conversation from housing needs to continue as from the Fair Housing Summit that happened last week, in this forum today, but even moving forward. But at this point in time, I cannot support this proposal, and if it's brought to vote today, I will be voting against it.
I, Councilmember Burton, I do agree with you as well. I'm also really concerned with us having another board that it's not elected officials. You know, we saw with the Parks Board and the pickleball courts and all of that, where City Council really didn't have any type of say once the money leaves here, and we're the elected officials, we're the voices for our constituents, and then we really don't have a say with what happens to the money or where it goes. And I'm afraid with us setting up this, it's going to be another whole entity where, you know, we're going to be funding money to another, another board, and then we're not going to be able to be the voice of our constituents, and that, that really concerns me. We're all fully invested in affordable housing and trying to make things work, and I really feel like, after listening to all of our nonprofit boards today, we're really, we really have to put our heads together and work on some great solutions. Yes, Councilman Hieronymus?
Madam Chair, just a couple of things. I, when we look at this model, this model does not resemble anything that we're not accustomed to here locally with local government. Number one, probably the biggest entity that has this particular model is our Convention and Visitors Bureau. Convention and Visitors Bureau has appointments from the mayor's office, county council, county commissioners, doesn't have appointments from us, correct, right? However, financing decisions come before county council all the time, budgets come before county council, and the same respect, and Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey, you know, not, not long ago was on county council, so she can attest to this. The fact that we're creating an entity and we have four appointments to the administration's five appointments, I think, gives us a pretty, pretty strong voice, because we're picking people that are advocates and champions of affordable housing, housing all across the spectrum of what, you know, I've heard us as counselors discuss when we were running in 2019, you know, what we've experienced, you know, through COVID and the particular different significant deplorable conditions. We do know that we have a need, and what I'll say is, you know, our most recent Housing Needs Assessment, which hasn't even been published yet, is saying that we need 5,500 units. We need 3,000 approximately home ownership units. We need 2,500 rental units. If you want to break that down into a little bit more macro of it, the House Group, whose strategic plan was, you know, implemented in 2021, has really honed in on households of about 45,000 and below, and we need about 1,000 units in total, both home ownership, just slightly more than rental units. So it is a need. What I, what I'll say is, you know, commitments or not, the City of Evansville needs to commit a lot more, and this gives us an opportunity to not only do what other communities are doing from a best practices standpoint, right? We have the City of Louisville that is committing $10 million annually out of their budget, and just an economy of scales, we're 118,000 people, $1 million to start with, 1.5 million after five years, and 2, 2 million allows all of our partners in this community, many of them that worked on this, and many of them that are providing great housing opportunities for people that wouldn't otherwise have it. We haven't just been talking for six weeks, Councilman Burton. We've been talking about this for over a decade in our community. We have many members who have done research and worked alongside folks. Now, the House Group, many of the folks from House participated in, Memorial CDC, Habitat, there were members from CAGE, Community One. We have a boomerang college student interested in housing for his hometown, and how can he play a role? We have one of the, you know, and I say this probably because I was one of his students, but one of the most knowledgeable urban development people in our community, and Dr. Matt Henke, Tom Orr with CenterPoint, myself, that, you know, really debated and deliberated if this was the appropriate way to go, and I say, if we are honestly serious about affordable housing, this is just step one in the right direction for Evansville, for our underserved communities, and for residents and neighborhoods to improve moving forward.
Councilman Bean.
Well, I would just say one thing. My reluctance at this point has nothing to do with the, with the request to ask for funding in the next 12, 15 years, whatever that was. I don't have any issue with that. I think we need to make strong moves towards that, and I, that's not the part of it that I have an issue with. It's the mechanics of how it works. Currently, just because we're sitting in the front row, I'm going to pick on the Reverend and Sarita, they'll put a grant together, they'll take it to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, they do all the work, they do all the preparation of it, and then they go make their request to them. Then when the grant is approved, hopefully, it, it goes, the money goes through Department of Metropolitan Development, and those folks are the ones to be sure that they're in compliance and that they're operating and saying what they are doing, what they said they were going to do, and that they're doing it in a legal way and documenting it so that it's easy to prove. And so, I have a little reluctant, without fully understanding how all those processes work, to push this forward for a vote tonight. We only have six members here, which means, you know, three votes is, is no action, and I think that the smart thing to do is appoint it to this committee to have a public meeting, which I know Messy loves to come in on her days off or when she could be selling a house to generate a meeting, but I think, I think that's where we need to go to have more discussion and get the details vetted out, but that's just not.
You know, I'm more than happy to let our constituents speak. I'm always available.
Madam Chair, I, I want to respond a little bit to Councilman Bean. Councilman Bean, as far as everything you said about, you know, oversight and, you know, making sure people are going to be above board, nothing of that's going to change. Matter of fact, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board will operate as, you know, other entities of this nature that do public work, they have, they have to abide by open-door laws. So when decisions are coming, you know, before the counts, the, the board in the same way that it does today, like, it's, it's a public meeting.
I, I just think that when we're asking, without knowing anything else about it, we say DMD is going to make the application, and then DMD is going to do the administrative oversight to be sure it's done correctly. You never want the fox watching the hen house, right? You just don't want to put your, you want it to be very transparent, you want it to be where everyone knows that a separate set of eyes that has nothing to do with you is going to look at that and critique every stroke of the pen, and so, I just don't see, I mean, I, I know this is a passion for you and you want to move this forward, and I'm, I'm not against the idea. I love the commitment part of the money-wise. I don't know fiscally if that's something that we could do, but I do say that I just don't think that this is ready to be passed without this, the whole operation being vetted out a little, a little more, with a little more detail.
Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to make a few comments and say that I think it sounds like, in some way, we are all on the same page as far as agreeing to, there's definitely a need, and, but I also am hearing some of the questions that you have, and I think that those are valid questions. I know when I talked to Councilman Hieronymus, and I said, you know what, go ahead and put my name on there, because looking at the huge need, you know, as a former public school teacher who taught at Cedar Hall and Harwood and Glenwood, you know, I've seen a lot of those needs firsthand, and a public servant for more years than I like to admit, but, you know, we know the needs are here and we all know that. And, you know, what appealed to me about the work that Councilman Hieronymus has done is that, that this is going to be able to leverage more funds, the formation of that not-for-profit corporation. So maybe we need to look at holding this for a little bit, maybe we need to do a little bit more work to make sure we have the best document. I don't think I hear anybody saying, no, this is a terrible idea, we don't need to do it at all. I think we, we need to make sure that everyone has their questions asked. I do think there's validity to the point that there are three people gone tonight, that we may want to hold off the vote tonight, and just, it doesn't have to be another six weeks, maybe just another couple of weeks, then we can get some questions answered, get some more details, and, and make sure that we are all on the same page so we can move our community forward, and, you know, we're all working for the same goal. We want our folks to have safe, good places to live.
Councilman Burton.
I, I will say, I, I will not feel comfortable unless we have millions committed. I mean, this is a community, whether we're talking old national, very global, all the, all the big entities here, we have to address housing, and we have to make sure, we can't do it alone. If the city's here responsible, trying to make housing, solve housing with a few hundred thousand dollars a year, we're not going to make any progress. We need a serious investment. I know there's some, some things in motion to attract resources here to our community, here into our community, but again, we're, we need millions of dollars to truly and really think about where we want housing to go and what that looks like, right? Not just in the urban core, but all across the city, from homelessness, the unhoused serving organizations, to those in domestic violence situations, to our elderly, all the above, and there's not that comprehensive thing where everybody's coming to the table saying, you know what, we can, we can donate millions, all, you know, even personal, this little, little is, you know, talked about, there is some money in our community. We have to tap into that to serve everywhere between the east and the west sides, and McCutcheon Ville, to make people choose Evansville and not continue moving to Newburg and Henderson, all for the sake of cheaper places to live.
Any other councilmembers?
At this point, I'd make a motion to table this and send it to committee, and that between now and the May 8 meeting, that you set a time for a public meeting, and we'll announce it on the 8th, and proceed with that.
I have a first to table this.
Second.
And a second. I have a first and a second.
I made the motion, and I think Alex accepted it.
Yes. Point of order, do I, do we go ahead and take a roll call vote?
Well, that's up to you all. I mean, you, you may want to get input before you, you vote as a matter of course, but that's obviously, I mean, that's up to you guys.
I do have three people that want to speak.
That was what I was going to ask, if folks are here.
I think if we're going to table it, save our comments for that meeting, or the next City Council, but we discuss it then.
But I would think if we've got folks here tonight, that...
They're here? All right, bring them up.
Might as well just...
We, I...
What's that, Josh?
There's three, right?
Yes, but it sounds, looks like we have a lot of people here that do want to speak, and if people came here for this meeting, I...
And they may have comments on the idea of tabling it also.
They may have comments on whether or not to table.
Okay.
I'm going to move forward with public comment, and then we will take a vote on holding that after some, after public comment. I have Addison Pollock. I hope I didn't butcher your name, I apologize. If you don't mind to state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, absolutely.
In three minutes, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mosby. Good evening, Addison Pollock, I'm Director of Community Engagement with AARP Indiana, so not from Evansville, I'm from Indianapolis, 746 North Bolton Avenue, Indianapolis, Indiana, but I do work with, I have the privilege of working with a team of volunteers who are local here in the community. Some of them are here tonight.
in the audience. These folks are just a handful of our 25,000 members across the greater Evansville community. And on behalf of them and, and the entire membership, we are supportive of these housing solutions. We feel that this ordinance, this proposal is a step in the right direction. If, whether you vote on it tonight or you table it, we just like what this looks like and hope that, that we can come to a resolution. AARP's Indiana's mission is to empower Hoosiers 50-plus to live as they choose as they age. A critical component to that is fulfilling, to fulfilling that mission is to ensure that Evansville and all Indiana communities have housing that allows them to age in place. So, it promotes well-being, personal independence, regardless of their age, ability, or income level. According to one of our 2021 surveys of Indiana residents, 86% of Hoosiers 45 years and older want to remain in their home as long as they choose. So, with these preferences, along with our overall aging community, our aging population, it's, we're seeing it in communities across the United States, we need to do something about housing. And that's why we think that tonight's proposal is a step in the right direction. We believe that it can facilitate some housing solutions that will serve the Evansville residents. We look forward to working with housing partners going forward. We're not a housing developer, but we are advocates, and we advocate for these housing options such as multifamily, missing middle housing, accessory dwelling units, things that promote people to remain in their community and not have to resort to things such as assisted living facilities necessarily, if that's not what they need. So, we thank you for your time tonight, and hope that you will consider this proposal and potentially vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Floyd Edwards.
Madam Chair, Mr. President, council members, my name is Floyd Edwards. I'm pastor of the Mount Olive Valley Missionary Baptist Church here in Evansville, Indiana, as well as a member of the steering committee for the CAGE organization's Housing Trust Fund. We had hoped tonight to demonstrate that you and the citizens of Evansville will be able to take off the band-aid, just take it off, and begin to do justice for individuals who are struggling with housing. This could have been a historical moment tonight, and we hope that it will come at some point in time, and take the steps to pass this ordinance. Your approval will say to many of your constituents who live in substandard housing that they are heard, and you intend to make their housing needs your priority. This ordinance and its programs will create solutions that will assist the elderly to age in their homes, your disabled constituents' access in and around their residences, and to the landlords of low-income housing in Avenue, to improve living conditions for renters without increasing their rents. And even this ordinance, for the first time, would give the Building Commissioner's Office Code Enforcement and the Environmental Court a valuable tool to offer those who are mandated by law to correct infractions. With this ordinance, with this ordinance's programs, those departments will seek quicker resolutions and many more successes. We invite you to our annual Nehemiah Action on May the 1st at St. Anthony Catholic Church at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian Brooks.
I'm Adrian Brooks. I live at 1401 East Park Drive here in the city, and I want to thank you for this opportunity. I'm totally in support of more resources for affordable housing, totally in support of that. What I'm, I'm not in support of is creating another, what I would think would be a bureaucratic hurdle for us, and potentially increasing our cost of development, because those resources that it takes to, one, formulate a 501(c)(3), audit a 501(c)(3), and administrate a 501(c)(3) are resources that we can use for the end-user, which are the people that we are here to serve. And so, currently, the process is, we work with the technocrats who are within DMD to, to do a formal application. We go to the Housing Trust Fund Committee, and then they then vote, and the recommendation comes to you, the city council, and you approve or disapprove. That's pretty, that's pretty clear-cut. So, it is, so I think the, the argument is sometimes mute in that we all support the resources, but we don't support creating another bureaucracy for us to have to deal with. I am a developer. I've been developing in this city for almost 30 years now, and I develop affordable housing. And we keep our rents, and you can check it out, more affordable than most in this city. A lot of private developers have an aught with us, because we won't raise our rents to levels that we could. And so, I come to you, this is 30 years. We've been, I'm not just an advocate, I, I am a developer. So, I'm not here to just make a statement. For 30 years, I've been trying to make a difference. And so, I would ask that you, if, if there are some, some minor adjustments that need to be made in the process, make those. But don't create another obstacle for us to confront in terms of trying to develop housing in this city. We currently have corporate, corporate collaboration with banks, insurance companies. I mean, any, any entity that wants to work with the 501(c)(3) who is developing housing has that opportunity right now. You have Memorial, you have Hope, you have Echo, you, you, you have Advantix. Those are 501(c)(3)'s who all develop housing in this city. So, if you commit resources through the city, we continue to use our resources along with the resources from the corporate community. You could certainly pass resolutions to encourage that as well. And I think we can move the needle a little bit more in terms of affordable housing. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak? Yes, please come forward.
Sarita Campbell, Executive Director, Memorial CDC. And I attended many of the meetings with Zach and the fellow House members. And I will be honest with you, when it was first presented to me, I had a couple of questions. We kind of continued to meet, and one of the things that probably made me lean towards it until I had some additional discussion with Reverend Brooks was the fact that we came here after we had an affirmative vote in the Housing Trust Fund, and then we were denied. And I feel that emotion kind of played into my, yeah, okay, maybe this is a good move on the nonprofit side. But I think what we've all said here today is that we do agree that we want the additional resources. But after additionally talking to some of our folks that we work with in Louisville, we've done a lot of consulting work, we've done a lot of just friendship work with folks that are developers up there, the model has its flaws. And so, I put Reverend on the phone at the last meeting with Zach and said, we have some concerns, so we would like to hold off on the nonprofit creation, just because we've been able to hear firsthand how it hasn't necessarily worked well up there. And then we know that even though what was put in the ordinance could potentially help, in one sense, there's still not that additional transparency that we can come back to with the elected officials versus those appointed officials. So, you know, putting it in the hands of those 11 folks, they can be very well-intended to be the right folks, but we could still end up in the same situation that we, that we ended up in, without the ability to come back and say, here's another board that is elected, that we've elected you guys, to ask you guys to then make the fairer vote for that. So, after having that discussion, that's why, you know, we're no longer in complete support of the nonprofit creation. Everything else, we agree. Make the tweaks, make the process easier, make it so that not just the developers, but our homeowners can access these funds, and put the right amount of money in there. Make it so that we can make that difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Yes, please come forward.
Thank you. Matt Henka with, with House, and I'm also a member of the Advisory Committee for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It's been a pleasure being a part of that for the last couple of years, because I've been able to see a lot of the good work coming in, and all the collaboration and partnerships we see of people wanting to use this entity. But this is an important time, I think I would echo this, possibly could have been a historic night to pass this because of the step, step we are taking. Yes, it's new, yes, it's different, but it's following a little bit of not only national best practices and how to run affordable housing trust funds, but we have a model based upon some 501(c)(3)'s we have who are quasi that work with the government, that, that, that will do, that will do the job. There's a lot of working things out once we get to the starting point. A thing about this ordinance that, that is, is it strengthens the committee. The committee works six times a year, does a minimum of six meetings. This strengthens it by adding more meetings. And it's not always meetings for the meeting's sake. It is to empower an entity to do the work of trying to fund affordable housing. And that's, that's, that's critical, because I, it's kind of somewhat of a little disconnect where we see the goodwill of people wanting to have affordable housing, and there's so many advocates here who are pushing for it, and the day-to-day work, that there are some times we were struggling as an entity to get a quorum, because we didn't have some of those people at the meetings, because sometimes there wasn't the business coming before. I know that's sort of an internal thing that can, that can be worked out. If there's more funding available, as it sort of outlines and potentially stair stepping this with the, the ordinance, this does, this does a good start. I, I think that there's, there's some opportunity there to, to take to that next level, and it doesn't deter anything by, by, by having a new starting point with respect to how we fund affordable housing. And a lot of those details are in the ordinance. If we have to flush them out sort of at a community conversation, that's completely fine. The work we did in this sort of subcommittee affinity group was trying to make sure that we knew what the timeline and sort of connecting the dots would be to get to an important starting point. Because a lot of, I, I just want us to all sort of be kind of in this, in this, in this one collective swoop and move. And I think there are some times that someone who is on this committee, we're, we're approving what we're approving, and they're, the need is much there. And I think this leverages not only the funds that you could get from what we put in as a city, we can leverage those funds. And the philanthropy group, the nonprofit community, they'll see this and embrace this. They'll, 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 they'll be behind this. And I, I think this is an important step for the community and the city of Evansville, and all, addressing all of affordable housing needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
I'm Brenda Meyer, and I reside at 5510 Jackson Court. And I've been involved with CAGE, and I started out in the pews in 2009, when we first talked about having to put more money in the Affordable Housing Fund, because it had been funded in 2001, and then nothing happened until money was put in until 2011, the 10,011, 10,012, or 10,011 budget. And then we went through years when it become defunct again. And I'm sitting back here, listening to you guys say, we need to do it right, as if you're doing it right now. And you're, it is not very effective. And we've got people who need things to be done. And please, take some, there's a time to act, and I think the time is now. And to not act is shameful at times. And we, we really do need to pull this community together to act in a way for affordable housing. And I do not want to be here, sitting back and saying, well, they didn't do it, and we sat back, and we waited, and nothing else happened, and we back again getting small amounts. We need to make something workable, we need something sustainable, and we need something that's collaborative and collective and works together. I think that's what this could do. Thank you.
I just have one more comment to make. There's many good comments made about this. Two things I'll say. You know, with the American Rescue Plan, $10 million was put into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which we are all very excited about, and we anticipate having a lot of good results from those. And so, as any city in the state can tell you, and as council members, that we deal routinely with where do the limited resources go. And it's hard to find money. While there was, this money was a windfall, and we took a, the mayor, much to his credit, took a big, a big chunk of it, and put it towards affordable housing. So, I'm excited about that. The other point I want to make is ultimately, the proposed 501(c)(3) Affordable Housing Trust Fund would be determining which projects would be funded with the limited resources that they'll have at some point very near in the future, after we expend this $10 million, and decisions have to be made. And what are the optics gonna be to all of the other non-profits that are operating now, when they put a plan together, and they take it to this Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and they're competing with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for that money? That's just a, a bad optic, and, you know, nonprofits work on a shoestring, and it could be, create anxiety and frustrations. And when you're playing against the bank, that's not a comfortable position to be in. So, I, I just, I really think we need to work this through a little more. And I, I am more, I'm for housing as much as anybody here is. So, I, I don't think that this is the hill that we decide that we're not, we, that we don't, if we don't vote for this, we don't care about housing. I don't think that's a fair and direct correlation. Thank you.
Councilman Hieronymus.
Yeah, just a, a few comments. I, I guess, and maybe a question to council, this ordinance was filed, I don't know, a little over three weeks ago, if not. And, you know, through the process of me working alongside these organizations and these housing-interested people, these community-minded folks that realize that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is not the end-all, be-all, even as it is coming forward. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as what is being proposed, is just one piece of a greater pie, and, and in my opinion, sharpens the Affordable Housing Trust Fund tool to provide greater dollars, greater access, greater equity. I don't, I don't believe the concerns that I hear about our oversight, because to Ms. Campbell's reminding us, we have had projects come before us with one remonstrator from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as it is today, and effectively somehow caused the course of voting on this council to go against the other eight folks. And, and what I would say is, it was a good project, and we brought it back, and I advocated for it to be brought back. I didn't think that we should have not voted it down at that particular time. So, there are things that can happen adversely, anytime, right? Good intention or not. But when I did my research, not just working alongside these folks, not just reading the articles, but talking with folks in the other communities, there's one gentleman that really kind of set everything that was, you know, question or concern that I had heard from Councilman Bean, or Pastor Brooks, or, or Councilman Burton, about what the impact of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is doing in Louisville. And this person is George Sanders, who is the Director of New Directions CDC, who has been in business for 52 years. They have a good network of developers, nonprofit, wholly, wholly nonprofit, that works strategically together. And knowing that the investments are there, and they have... And knowing that the investments are there and they have an administrator that is wholly focused day in and day out about what can the Housing Trust Fund do for their community. That's effectively what I believe we are setting the trust fund up here in the city of Evansville with this particular ordinance, whether or not it's tabled and moved to a different meeting or we have a committee hearing or not. I always, a good friend and mentor of mine said, "I always go into everything understanding the best intentions." And I think if we focus on what could go adversely wrong, or if personal feelings or thoughts or needs or desires enter into decisions that are best for our community, we're selling ourselves short and we're diminishing things. And I'll say, if we had this model in effect, when two years ago, we sat aside $10 million for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we would have every bit of that allocated today and working towards housing that we need today. And instead, and instead, tonight, if I'm not mistaken, we're just now allocating the first $2 million of that $10 million, two years after the fact. This is what a working board does. This is what nonprofits do. And this is what I honestly believe is a move in the right direction, not just for this, but housing overall.
I have, I'm going to follow. Sorry.
Councilman Burton had something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You got me? Okay. Well, you know, I will say something, and this is probably just old-school knucklehead me. I've never asked for anything in my life that I didn't prep the people I was asking and call them and ask them, "What do you need? Or what do you need to know to give me what I want?" And you brought up our first year on council for five of us. We had not dealt with these appropriations before. I got no calls from anybody from the administration or DMD and not from the people who were asking for the money. So I didn't have any information other than a three-page paper that I was given on the floor of council that night to make my decision on this. I called you last week on Thursday's act just to try to, because I had some questions. My questions tonight, most of them have developed in this conversation as we're talking and working through this. This is not, I'm not on an agenda for anybody, for anything. I just think things need to be very transparent and fair. And because I didn't have the information I needed at that time, we voted against it. It was quickly provided and explained to me very easily in two phone calls the next day. And then, okay, I'm good with that. But I didn't have it at the time. And so, as we talk tonight, I realize there's very many questions that I have. And everyone who's here that wants to say, "I'm voting against affordable housing," is just, I'm just going to have to respectfully disagree with you because this is not a vote against affordable housing. This is a vote for transparency and for everyone to play by the same rules. And the people awarding the money to nonprofits should not be a nonprofit that has applied to itself to fund something. So that's my comments on that.
Councilman Burton.
Yeah, as, as the conversation was going, I thought a quote really came to mind and said, "Best intentions don't always mean the best outcomes." Specifically speaking for the fourth world, whether we're talking old or new, right? You have all these elaborate plans and ideas, right? But there are things that have to be addressed specifically regarding housing. There are too many people in Evansville living in housing that is, that was supposed to be, last 50 years, have a shelf life of 50 years. We're in year 110 in a lot of instances. That is an issue. If we're, again, and I'll say this, said it before and I'll say it again, if we're going to really address housing, we need commitments and buy-ins to create another nonprofit on the sake of, "It's a good idea," is not going to, is not going to get us more money in the bank. And who are we going to get the money from who isn't already contributing to the existing nonprofits, right? We did a full, all-out effort into addressing housing right now. And when Councilman Hieronymus called proposing this, that was my question, "Where's the money coming from?" Right? We don't know. And I can't say, I can't say right now that Center Point, "Yeah, absolutely," is going to give $5 million to affordable housing for fiscal year 2024. I don't know that. That's the amount of money that it's going to take to get these other projects off the ground to impact housing the way that it needs to. Again, we're not having the nonprofit in place now isn't stopping anything. We're going to continue the conversation. We're going to continue to advocate for housing, safe, quality, and affordable housing, like many in the audience are already producing. We need more of it. And we need a system to get more housing done. So as Councilman Bean said, this isn't a vote against housing by any means. This is basically the sausage making of how we get to better housing for our community. You know, again, I'll mention, families don't come live to Evansville, whether they're, Mr., you're a realtor. Where are you going to show families to live in Evansville right now?
Our inventory is so low. I've got a list of people waiting for houses and people wanting to relocate here.
They're moving to Henderson, Newburgh, everywhere else. Wow. Well, I mean, what is that? They're attracted to Evansville but not living in Evansville. It's good enough to work in, but certainly not good enough to live in, yet. And I say yet because this is the task at hand. Conversations have, this is just the beginning. I mean, for those who come feeling defeated, please do not. Because this is the start of what, where we need to get to as a community. Right now, we're sitting at about 117,000 residents. If we do this right, we should be closer to 130,000 residents sooner rather than later. And for those who are already living in our community, having somewhere that they can say, "Safe, quality, and affordable housing," and increasing homeownership. In this moment right now, homeownership is worse than it was in 1950. What does that say about us in 2023? We have to improve housing and this can't be a decision based on a small group. We have to bring everybody to the table and everyone has to agree. It's not one of those things where build it and they will come. No, let's build it so that we can have, so all residents here in the city have somewhere to live and want to live.
And one last note. Once again, it's not against affordable housing. We can all sit here and we agree on that. And, you know, I think it's sad that some of you are saying we're not for affordable housing because we definitely are. But I'm also for my constituents to have a voice. And I've had a lot of people call with a lot of concerns on this in the last couple of days. So I feel like some of our other council members that we need to have some more discussion, have some more meetings and see where it goes from there and make sure we get this right. Because it is a huge problem here. And we've got to all work together to make sure we do the right things to get affordable housing here in Evansville. So we do have a first by Councilman Bean, a second by Councilman Burton to hold this.
Yeah. How that works, I mean, since we are in a first and a second on the ordinance itself?
Yeah, you just might go ahead and say, when, this is a motion to table it, to what date you want to table it to?
Okay.
I think we need to have a series of hearings before we set a date.
I think we can get the date set for the hearings by the May 8th meeting and take it back up on the 22nd. Is that the next meeting in May?
So the 8th and the 22nd are the meetings in May, yes.
Yeah, so do you want this for the 8th or the 22nd?
Yeah, so is that what we want to do now? I mean, is that where we are in the process? So I'll make a motion that we table this until May 22nd. And at the May 8th meeting announcement, the meeting will be to discuss this in a separate junior committee with ASB.
Okay. And then Councilman Burton is seconding that.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Point of order. I'm confused on what we're voting on now. I think we have made about three motions, so if we could clarify that.
I think the motion is to table it until May 22nd. And then at the next meeting, you guys can decide a committee meeting date that you'll have it. So technically, this motion is to table it to May 22nd.
But technically, didn't we have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
The motion to hold will take precedence over that.
Okay, okay. All right, just making sure that we're doing everything and we don't miss a step.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Do you still have this?
Yes, please.
Councilman.
And this is split until May 22nd. Aye.
Councilwoman Mosby?
Aye.
Councilman Burton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey?
Aye.
Councilman Bean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore?
I think I need to be clear that I really am in favor here for progress, not perfection. But I'm willing to listen to as many people as possible to get as close to perfection as possible, so I'm an aye.
Was that aye? Councilman Hieronymus?
No.
There being five ayes and one no, we are going to hold this until May 22nd. And at our next meeting, we will announce the open public meetings that we will have and we will allow for public input as well. So stay tuned and we'll keep you posted on that.
Ordinance F.2023-04, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Evansville approving the annual community development plan and appropriating community development block grant, emergency solutions grant, and home investment partnership grant funds.
Greetings. I'm the technocrat that runs DMD.
What is a technocrat?
At your service. I love that technocrat.
I thought maybe Dr. Seuss was in the room, creating words.
I've been called a lot of things, but it's the first for that one. I thought I was going to get arrested. Councilman Burton, I can tell you, while we're waiting for the noise to die down, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it's on the Controller's Finance Ordinance, 749, 749-791-95, will be the balance in grants and subsidies. And we are holding $40,000 of that on a commitment to HOPE for down payment assistance. So subtract $40,000 from that. That will be the balance in your Affordable Housing Trust Fund, assuming you approve the Controller's Finance Ordinance, which I've stopped predicting anything anymore.
All right, Kelly, I believe we've, the dust has settled.
So are there, are there any details that I can answer for you that you don't know, that you didn't hear in the discussion earlier in the Finance Committee with our agencies? The, for, just to remind you, our CDBG funds are in two categories, public service, non-public service. HUD sets a cap on what you can devote to direct public service. And so you have the agencies that the CAC made recommendations for and the mayor agreed with them. If the cap is 15% of your total allocation that you can assign to public service. And then our non-public service, that's where we get our administrative dollars to do studies. I pay two of my specialists out of CDBG that do nothing but CDBG work. And then we have organizations like Memorial, Cape, that are called CBDOs, which are different than public service agencies. CBDOs can access greater amounts of money because they do other things than just one item. They move the economic footprint of a low-income person forward in other ways. So you see Memorial has a lot of programs that do just that. They move the, they move the economic footprint of the community forward. So, but what you cannot do is move money from non-public service into public service because you could bust your public service cap and then you get in real trouble with housing and urban development, which I've spent 10 wonderful years as director and kept us out of trouble all those years. But you, I mean, you can move money around, but what I always tell council is that if you take money from one agency and move it to another, it's your phone number they get, the one that loses the money. I'm not going to answer for it. You guys have to do that, so.
Well, anything I suggest, I'll make it because you requested that I did that.
That's never going to happen. Because this is my last one.
But they don't know that. Does anybody have any questions about what we went through earlier and listened to and have any questions about any of those things on this first one? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment. Kelly, I hate to admit that I've been doing this public service stuff for 30 years right along with Reverend Brooks. I was two, I think, when I started. But this process is so greatly improved over what it was when I started this back in 1993. It was a mess. And so, thank you for your department, for the work you guys have done, and for all of our nonprofits. There's never enough dollars to go around. And I really, truly do believe that we're all here for the same reason. We just want to, we want to make this be the best place we can. So thank you to you and your staff and the committee members for making this process work again.
Anyone else from council have any questions?
Yeah, I did. Kelly, did the YMCA reach out about their funding and what bucket they wanted the funds to go to?
They made their proposals.
Okay. What, this is what they proposed?
Right.
Okay.
Will you have them on the flash drive?
Yes, but I had a conversation with somebody from the Y and she was trying to tell me about it. I just wanted to make sure that.
And Sean wasn't here tonight, so that's kind of odd.
Yeah.
But they would have called us, they would have called Colby, and no one called Colby.
Okay, okay. That's why I wanted to just ask that question.
Colby's a junior technocrat.
Okay. Anyone else from council? Does anyone in the audience that have any questions about this finance ordinance? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
We need a motion to adopt.
Oh, we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
And then we also, technically, since there are no city council recommendations, do you just, somebody want to make a motion to accept the mayor's recommendations or any changes that need to be held?
Yeah, I move that we follow the mayor's recommendations and support the budget.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And Chair Bean, just as a point of order and just so it's on the record, I'll be recusing myself from this vote.
Right. Anything else on that then?
We're good.
We're good. All right, well, let's proceed to the next one then.
Councilwoman Mosby?
Aye.
Councilman Burton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey?
Aye.
Councilman Bean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore?
Aye.
All right, there being five ayes and zero nays, I declare this adopted.
I have the next one, I believe.
Yes, please.
Ordinance F.2023-05 amended, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Evansville authorizing transfers, repeal, and reappropriation of funds within the Department and Metropolitan Development.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this?
No, we need to accept the amendment first.
Motion to accept the amendment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we can make a motion to.
Motion to adopt ordinance F.2023-05 as amended.
We're going to have to get referee and a flag for me. That's all I can see in my future. So do I have a motion to adopt ordinance F.2023-04?
So moved.
Second. We're on 05.
05, I'm sorry. Check that, 05.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
It's been a long one.
Okay.
Poor Vivian.
All right, now the floor is open for discussion, I think.
All right, these are, what I have before you on this ordinance are prior year CDBG funds that we've pulled forward to do a couple of things. The second one is, I think, very important, the Zion House. We talked about the Zion House. They apply, UCS has applied for home partnership investment funds for that. Of course, you can't allocate home until you're shovel-ready. And so, the $25,000 planning grant will pay for the architectural designs, the pre-development work that they need to do to get that. the, the, the pre, pre-development work that they need to do to get that old parsonage ready for their, for what they, their, their new use for it. Uh, it'll pay for the environmental, all the things that have to be done before you can spend federal funds. So that's the $25,000. And then the $30,000, we need to get a new vehicle for our inspector. Uh, the vehicle we have is some years old, and it, it's developed a lot of problems. Uh, and one of the things I'm trying to do is to get everything done to hand off my job to someone else and have as many things in place so that they don't have to worry about it in '24 or '25. So, uh, this, the new vehicle purchase would, we'll, you know, get bids like we always do on, on a new vehicle. But those are the two things that I have on that ordinance for you tonight.
Any questions from council? Any questions from the audience on this ordinance? Uh, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilwoman Mosby?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hieronymus?
Aye.
There being five ayes and zero nays?
Six.
Six? Oh, six, we're back to six, okay. With six ayes and zero nays, I declare adopted, that, whatever, that what you voted on.
However, that works. All right, thank you.
They're just numbers, right?
Ordinance F 2023-06 amended, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Evansville authorizing transfers of appropriations, additional appropriations, and repeal and reappropriation of funds for various city funds.
All right, uh, do I, this one has an amendment as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, do we have a, a motion to, uh, a def, to accept the amendment to ordinance F 2023-06?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then is there a motion to adopt ordinance F 2023-06 as amended? Floor is now open for discussion.
Good evening, councilors. Russell Lloyd, Controller, and I'll go through here pretty quick. So, page one, you got the transfer for the zoo, $8,950. Under Section 2, repeal and reappropriate. First item is for the payout of the executive director of Human Resources, who is retiring, $24,370. Aquatic Center funding, the management fee, $75,000. That's it on page one.
Okay. Uh, any questions from council on page one? All right, let's move to page two.
Page two is additional appropriations. First item, general fund for Mets, $50,000. Second item is surplus property sale, Fire Department, 280, 590. Third item is American Rescue Plan Act fund. Total of these housing-related organizations and homeless-related, $1,041,046,35. Next item is Parks Fund for Deaconess Aquatic Center management fee, $75,000. Last item is Parks Fund, Storm Repairs at Harkey Pool, $10,400. Be happy to answer any questions.
Russ, I do have a question. Uh, for Rescue Plan, for ARPA funds left, uh, what is that, is that balance? I know I asked you a while back regarding the balance. Is it still roughly that $5 million that's still available for, that's been unallocated?
No, that's minus this.
Okay, so then we're looking at 3.6?
About three and a half, yeah, 3.5.
Any other questions from council? All right, move to the next page.
Chair Bean, I'm sorry, I do want to talk a little bit about the ARP requests. Obviously, I will have to recuse myself from this particular vote. As it mentions in there, it's about revenue replacement, capacity building, and sustainability. Uh, when we look at kind of what the landscape looks like for homeless services, and especially housing in our community, coming out of COVID has been really, really challenging for a lot of organizations. One, um, a lot of federal dollars came into our community to help in emergency, you know, the, in response to, to COVID, right? So for emergency use. And what we've seen coming out is, as federal dollars began to dwindle in our community last year, as the Greater Evansville Relief Fund worked their way through what was set aside, the housing crisis that we have is really compounding the work. And so in conversations as part of the Region 12 Planning Council, and just to give you a little insight into that, it is a body of homeless services providers, both direct, so our shelter system is there, Aurora's there, as, and then ancillary service providers, including folks that represent the EVSC and other entities, important to homeless services holistically. And, and so a lot of the conversations have been about, you know, what have the impacts been? We've ramped up our services, but funding is no longer being provided. Uh, we've had capital projects that haven't been able to, been carried out largely in part because funding in the community was, was difficult. And, um, and then, you know, the byproduct of greater need with homeless services. So we, um, you know, tend to do our best to, uh, work collectively, and we do a tremendous job in that respect. These additional funds, holistically, the organizations that have put in feel like it will position the entire homeless services network for a really good, it put us in a better spot for the next couple of years. So I just, I wanted to kind of talk to that, you know, and then also make it clear that on the record, I, I will have to recuse myself. But I, I do ask my colleagues to support this and all the organizations before you.
Thank you. Any other council members? You gotta hold it now.
I'm holding it.
All right.
Page three?
Yeah, page three, please, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, you got Economic Development Fund, $22,16, uh, $15,000, that's a separate grant. Affordable Housing Trust Fund, $749,791. So this is to appropriate the funding to the grants and subsidy line for two years. Next item, Casino Fund, Central Dispatch, $17,495, maintenance agreement. Next, fourth item, Casino Fund, $135,684, motor vehicle barrier system to be reimbursed. Fifth item, Casino Fund from cash to Mets, $850,000. Pilot micro-transit system that's a partnership with Toyota and the FTA, and, uh, $745,000 will be reimbursed. Next item, Casino Fund, $42,000, CK Newsome, repairs of the heating and air conditioning system. We'll need that this summer. Last item, Traffic Engineering, increase in cost of a line-striping truck, $49,046 from casino cash. Questions on that?
Okay, any questions from members of council? Okay.
Okay, this, uh, page four.
Yep.
So the unemployment fund, so this is the $24,340, 370 for the Executive Director of Human Resources. She is actually located in the unemployment fund. So the first item that I talked about was a repeal. So we had, this was on a private, pre, previous Finance Ordinance. We put it out of Human Resource in the general fund, so that's repealed because it actually needs to be the unemployment fund. Same with the Aquatic Center, uh, those were repeals. Last, last, kind, couple items here are the amended section. Section 1, first transfer, $65,000 motor equipment for Mets, FTA passenger sampling audit. Uh, the last section, repeal and reappropriate local roads, $3,500,000 for, uh, the following projects, and you can see the list there, Division Street, Bob Jones Way, uh, Ray Becker Slide Study, Dresden Outfall, Max Road. So these are all ongoing projects, funding for that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from member of council?
Yeah, City Engineer here. Hey, oh, yes, I knew that. Sorry, sorry about that, Mike. Question about Kentucky Avenue.
Okay.
That's all. I, I just, for the question on, where is that in the pipeline?
I don't have my list of paving projects here today, but it's in the pipeline.
Okay.
I don't know if it's, uh, in the project we just contracted out or the project we just received, C, uh, Community Crossings money for.
Yep, okay.
It's in one of those two, one of those two sets of projects, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we have some from the audience. There are four of you, and I'm gonna call you all up at the same time. Uh, I will make note that no council members have made any recommendations of making any deductions in any of these amounts. So if the amount that's requested is what you're hoping for, you're gonna get it. So, Taylor, you're speaking to that. Gina Gist, and then Erica Taylor, John Rich, and Va Kun? What's that? I'm sorry, Kun, okay. Yeah, just come up, get close, and whoever I called, you're in that order, right there. So hop up, go. This is Gina, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, hi, I'm with Albion Fellows Bacon Center.
Okay.
And we were just asking that the ARP funds be approved. Um, one of the things that during the pandemic, we continued keeping our doors open, even though we had to do it in a variety of different ways.
Right.
Um, our shelter program remained open with health and safety precautions. Our mobile advocacy programs ended up going virtual, where we were meeting people through Zoom teams on the phone, but we continued throughout that time. One of the things that the pandemic did, um, we really did take a hit with our fundraising efforts. All of our in-person fundraising activities were canceled. We lost about $100,000 just in fundraising alone. Not to mention, right before the pandemic, we started a capital campaign to add four rooms to our facility, two bathrooms, and then a wing of offices. And while our capital campaign started off really strong, once the pandemic hit, a lot of the businesses, individuals who had pledged campaign dollars were no longer able to follow through on that. So we're just really appreciative that you're looking at spreading these dollars, and this is something that will really help us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Erica?
Hello again, it's been a long day. Appreciate you guys. Wasn't quite sure what to expect with this presentation, but since you've given that great news, Councilwoman Bean, I'm gonna tailor my comments a little bit.
That was the, that was the object. Objective, that word, yeah.
Just for a little bit of context, um, since 1911, the YWCA has been a mainstay in our community, providing much-needed assistance to vulnerable populations. From the Great Depression and the Ohio River flood of 1937, which we have photos of the Red Cross working out of the Y to serve food to the community, to the COVID-19 pandemic, the YWCA has provided essential services through the best of times and the worst of times. When COVID-19 swept through our community, our goal was to ensure that we continued to deliver services to the homeless, survivors of domestic violence, and at-risk youth. Through planning and collaboration with our valued community partners, including the Region 12 Planning Council, we were able to adapt our services to respond to the needs of our community, and we're continuing to do so as we rebuild and emerge from the pandemic. So women in marginalized communities continue to face countless challenges that started long before the COVID-19 pandemic, including gender-based violence and inadequacy of affordable housing. This was all exacerbated by the pandemic. We continue to serve women and families where they need it most by providing emergency housing for homeless women and children. I told you all about that last in the four o'clock meeting. So I just want to say that we did maintain 24/7 services during a pandemic. It was challenging. It's not something I ever put on my list of goals as a 12-year-old, that I want to, want to run a, a communal living facility in a pandemic. It was challenging, um, but we did so with very dedicated staff that I owe all of our successes to. So because of the pandemic, we did lose an estimated $247,000 in lost fundraising. Um, so for all the reasons Gina stated. So I just want to thank you guys for, um, taking this under consideration, and thank you for all you do. Thank you to Mayor Winnicky for this and for Zach for your efforts.
Thank you. John?
John Rich, Co-Executive Director of Patchwork Central. Once again, thank you. I will again shorten my remarks. Thank you so much for funding this. I want to say a special thank you for funding not just the homeless shelters, but the ancillary programs, which is what Patchwork Central does. You heard earlier about our afternoon after-school programs. In the mornings, we are just open. We are not exclusively serving individuals going through homelessness, but a lot of them are. We provide an alternative place for them to socialize, to get showers, a place for them to meet with case managers, free use of telephones, referrals. I'm a registered nurse. I help them with a lot of healthcare concerns. We have a bicycle program that helps with their transportation. A lot of them rely on bicycles to get to appointments, jobs, et cetera, and we can give them that mode of transportation. Our food pantry provides supplemental nutrition. So there are lots of different things, and if, if you know about homelessness and, and folks going through that, it's a very individualized journey, uh, and a lot of folks have a lot of different needs. And so places like Patchwork and lots of other ancillary programs are really necessary in addition to the shelters. So thank you for recognizing that, and thank you for funding it. Thank you.
Okay, Va?
Good evening. Thank you again for this opportunity. My name is Va Kun. I'm the Executive Director of United Caring Services. Um, the address is 324 Northwest Sixth Street in Evansville. So I stand before you to request the appropriation of the American Rescue Plan Act to local nonprofits working in the homeless service sector. Homelessness in Evansville is an, a growing problem with increasing visibility and an all-time number count. This social issue is extremely complex, and the problem can only be solved through a collaborative community approach. To my mind, it requires a multifaceted, multi-pronged strategy to end and prevent homelessness before it becomes intractable. United Caring Services is one of several organizations before you requesting this fund. And for us, in our mind, we really form a collaborative ecosystem to provide continuum of care. So let me shift mode a little bit and talk about the economics of homelessness rather than present a case for United Caring Services. So we know that there is a cost to the community. Men and women experiencing chronic homelessness commonly have co-occurring mental health challenges, substance use disorders, medical conditions that worsen, and too often lead to an early death. Without connections to the right types of care, they cycle in and out of emergency departments, detox programs, jails, prisons, and psychiatric institutions, all at a very high cost to our community. The, the United States Interagency on Homelessness says that leaving a person in chronic homelessness costs taxpayers between approximately between $30,000 and $50,000 a year per individual. These costs do not include the, those that is to our community where human talents and resources cannot be tabulated. So the funds, these funds can provide services, programs, and agency capacity to building work towards preventing homelessness and to elevate unhoused individuals. Your, your allocation of emergency ARPA funds to homeless service agencies will be an investment to our community, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Mosby?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey? Councilwoman Bean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore?
I'm a huge fan of any finance ordinance that supports fantastic local nonprofits, and also the purchase of a new Komodo Dragon restraint box, which I'm very excited about. So I am definitely an aye.
And Councilwoman Hieronymus will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay, so we have five ayes and one abstention. I hereby declare, let me go back to the number now, try to get back on track. Uh, I hereby declare ordinance F 2023-06 as amended, adopted.
All right.
Ordinance R 2023-01 amended, an ordinance to rezonate certain real estate in the City of Evansville, State of Indiana, more commonly known as 4105 Pollock Avenue.
Is there a motion to accept?
Is there a motion to accept the amendment for Ordinance R-2023-01? Okay, I have a first from Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey.
Second.
Second. Got a second from Councilman Burton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So ordered. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance R-2023-01 amended?
Sound moved.
Okay, I have a first from Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey.
Second.
All right, got a second from Councilman Bean. Floor is now open for discussion of this item among council. Cassie, take it away.
Good evening, council members. Cassie Virgin, Area Plan Commission. I have a handful for you this evening. We're gonna start with our docket number REZ-2022-042. Proposed ordinance number R-2023-01. Daniel Colas, on behalf of F&amp;M Home Healthcare Agency LLC, is requesting to rezone 0.43 acres of property located at the southeast corner of Pollock Avenue and Hicks Drive from R1 to R3 to allow construction of a multifamily residential development. This site is located in an area of predominantly single-family residential use. This area was annexed into the city of Evansville in 1959, and the city directory confirms a single-family residence existed on this site that same year. A previous property owner attempted to rezone this property along with the adjoining lot to the east for commercial use in 1968. Proposed ordinance R-68-58. But the request was unanimously denied by the Area Plan Commission and the petitioner chose to not move forward. The single-family structure on this site was later razed in 2018, and the lot has since been left vacant. The applicant now proposes to rezone the property to R3 to allow a stated use of fourplex. The property owner of record, F&amp;M Home Healthcare Agency LLC, is a business entity that is not registered in the state of Indiana, and therefore no details concerning their business operations could be confirmed. During the public hearing by the Area Plan Commission, the applicant stated this site would not be affiliated with any business operations of the owner. It would only serve as a rental property. The site plan submitted with this request does not include all of the details necessary to fully evaluate compliance with the zoning code at this time. The preliminary plan proposes construction of a new 4,809 square-foot multifamily residential structure, putting the calculated lot coverage exactly at 40%, which is the maximum allowed in an R3 zoning district. The information submitted by the applicant indicates the structure will house four dwelling units with up to three bedrooms each. The large size of the structure does not allow adequate room for the required parking area and also eliminates the required front, side, and rear yard green space, none of which is shown on the site plan. Should this request be approved, the site plan as submitted will require several variances to meet zoning code requirements. The 2035 Future Land Use Map recommends this site area for residential uses. This step-up in residential zoning remains consistent with the comprehensive plan. However, the plan does not address the recommended density of new development in residential areas. The plan's pertinent policy statements concerning this particular rezoning request are found in the General Land Use Action Plan, which states discourage rezonings that will require a variance to meet code requirements. And as mentioned previously, the proposed multifamily development shown on the site plan included with this request will require multiple variances to meet zoning code requirements, mostly due to the small size of the lot. This request for rezoning now comes forward from the Area Plan Commission with a recommendation that the petition be denied following a motion for approval with only two affirmative votes and eight negative votes. I don't see the petitioner here anywhere. So if you have questions.
Have you heard from the representative of the owner?
Have not heard anything additional beyond what was said at the Plan Commission meeting.
All right.
I, I have had a lot of complaints on, on this one.
Yeah, well, there's a reason it got two for and eight against it.
Yes, yeah. I've spoken to neighbors over there. So this is the property that across the street used to be the old duck inn, which was razed. And, and one of the homeowners actually purchased that property, fenced it in. It looks beautiful. So they're trying to, you know, rejuvenate that area and this would just be a detriment to that area.
Well, if there's no one here to represent the owner.
I would be fine going ahead and voting on it.
At least somebody wants to comment. I don't know if you're a demonstrator or what, but you've got.
Yeah.
You may have several in the audience.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, the beautiful fence and across the street. That young lady is responsible for it, so, yeah. She was at the area plant.
Which it just got hit a few weeks ago.
And I will say, a lot of the conversation there in that meeting dealt with that they're covering the absolute maximum allowable of the property and that they'll have to get variances for parking and for something else if they decided to do it. But it's just, as one of the members of the commission said, it's just too much for that little lot in a completely residential neighborhood now, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's why it was voted like it was.
I mean, I, I, I mean, councilors, I don't, I don't even know if it's necessary to have public comment 'cause it seems the recommendation and the sentiment on the body is.
But they have sat here this long, so if they wanna have something to say.
You just wanna see the action get done, is what I understand, right?
Yeah, it's, it's going that good way.
Straw poll real quick, is anybody gonna not, not vote this down? How about that?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anybody here to remonstrate for it to happen?
Or to.
I think we have our answer.
All right.
Who's here to remonstrate against it? Could we look at them or have them wave their hand? Yeah, there we go.
I mean, remonstration is saying you don't want this to go through, so you're, you're, yeah.
Roll call vote?
I think we can do roll call. All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Mosby?
No.
Councilwoman Burton?
No.
Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey?
No.
Councilman Bean?
No.
Councilman, excuse me, Councilwoman Moore?
No.
Councilman Hieronymus?
No. There being six, or zero, sorry, zero ayes and six nays. Ordinance R-2023-01 amended is hereby declared denied.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I have to, had to work myself through that 'cause we don't normally just go that hardcore into the, into the no's, you know, so. But I agree totally. I mean, why, why, when you look at all the.
Ordinance R-2023-02, an ordinance to rezone certain real estate in the city of Evansville, state of Indiana, more commonly known as 313, 317, 319, and 321 North Garvin Street.
Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance R-2023-02?
Sound moved.
Okay. Having a first from Councilman Burton and a second from Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey. Floor is now open for discussion of this item among council.
Okay, this one was our docket number REZ-2022-043. Proposed ordinance R-2023-02. This was one that you all chose to continue from last month, so we'll just have a little refresher on it. Mark Colas requesting to rezone the property located at 313, 317 to 319, and 321 North Garvin Street from C4 and M1 with a use and development commitment to CO2 to allow an unpermitted triplex and single-family residence with multiple accessory structures currently in violation of the zoning code. This site is located in an area of mixed zoning with predominantly residential uses. The dominant zoning district to the north of this site is R2, and to the south and southwest is mostly C4 with both commercial businesses as well as legal non-conforming single-family homes throughout. The property at 313 and 317, 319 North Garvin Street was rezoned from R2 to C4 by a previous property owner in 1966 to allow a truck and trailer rental business. The lot at 321 North Garvin Street was then rezoned from R2 to C4 in 1984 to bring conditions into compliance with the zoning code and allow a sporting goods store existing at that time. And that was Ordinance R-83-55. The lot at 313 North Garvin was rezoned once again by the current applicant in 2013 from C4 to M1 with a use and development commitment to allow an unpermitted auto body paint and repair shop. That was Ordinance R-2013-23. And again, bring the property into compliance. The applicant now proposes to rezone all lots to CO2 to allow the unpermitted conversion of all commercial structures to residential use. And again, bring the property into compliance with the zoning code. The 2035 Future Land Use Map recommends this site remain commercial use. The requested zoning district of CO2 is consistent with the comprehensive plan. However, the plan does not support the proposed residential use of this site. Additionally, the existing commercial buildings on this site were originally constructed for higher intensity commercial uses than those permitted in the CO2 zoning district. Residential use of the existing structures will require multiple variances to meet code requirements. And as stated in the General Land Use Action Plan, discourage rezonings that will require a variance to meet code requirements. A complaint was received by APC staff in March 2021 regarding unpermitted outdoor storage and junk on the property. Research of the property showed that no permits had ever been issued for the auto body repair use following the rezoning to M1 in 2013, as the applicant had never filed for nor completed the site review process. Since that time, several violation letters have been sent to the applicant informing him of the permit requirements. An application for site review was submitted for 313 North Garvin Street in May 2021 to allow the change of use from auto sales to storage and auto body shop. However, the applicant withdrew the application following the meeting and indicated a new application would be submitted to include the other properties as well. No such revised application was ever filed for this site, leading APC staff to issue additional violation letters and fines throughout 2021 and 2022. On August 12, 2022, the applicant consulted with APC staff regarding optional steps to bring the property into compliance and was given detailed instructions on how to proceed. Subsequently, the applicant filed this rezoning request on December 12, 2022. Should this request be approved, the applicant will be required to submit an improvement location permit application for the property at 321 North Garvin Street and complete the site review process before any residential permits will be issued. However, the original date of residential occupancy for the unpermitted structures is unknown at this time. During the most recent inspection of the property on March 29, 2023, a zoning inspector observed the outdoor storage of large enclosed commercial trailers, a boat, tires, and other items, storage which is not permitted with residential use, nor with commercial use without the installation of an eight-foot opaque fence. The applicant was issued an additional compliance warning following this inspection. A follow-up has not been conducted at this time. This request for rezoning now comes forward from the Area Plan Commission with a recommendation for approval having 11 affirmative votes. Yes, he is here.
Mr. Cole?
Yes, sir.
Yep. So, talk to us about your project.
I can hardly, I'm deaf, I'm gonna speak, I can hardly hear you.
Can you talk to us about your project, what you're helping to accomplish?
My project's been apartments there forever. I mean, it's been there forever and I had to get it rezoned. I rezoned it for a body shop. That guy got a bunch of junk around there. I got rid of him and they had a place across the street that had a bunch of junk too. They're over cleaning the neighborhood up. I'm trying to clean it up. That's in an alley. That back fence back there runs all the way down with the exception of where that parking lot's at. People come through that alley back there and throw stuff in the alley all the time. I'm back there cleaning it up. I gotta pick, it's none, it's none of my people that do it. Now, I've got a girl that lives in one house. I'm always back and forth with her. Her husband's got tires out there and everything else for her vehicle. And I go by there and tell her I'm gonna throw them away and she wants me to keep them 'cause they're supposed to be good. And then she's got kids and they're running on bicycles and stuff out there in the back. But I try to keep that place cleaned up. I do the best I can. I don't know what all, I don't know what all she said up here. I couldn't hear all of it, so.
Okay.
Your address, I wanna make sure that you have the right address with, with APC because several letters have been sent to you and there hadn't been any response.
I've been responding to whatever. I've been over and cleaned up messes. I don't know what you got.
They've gotten some response, just not every letter that went out.
If I know it was over, they charged me $500, I'm gonna clean it up, so I go over and clean it up. I mean.
Yeah, it's just a repeat over and over of the same thing.
One time I go over and cleaned it up, we cleaned it up, but then we put a door in over there and then they come over and they got that again. But there was another door that I put in a garage over. We tore it out and put another garage up. The pictures were there and I don't know what, I don't know what you want me to do. I can't tear places down.
Councilwoman Bean?
Yeah, so the rezoning, I guess this is the question, is to get us, if we get compliant with what's actually there on that block?
Can you turn your microphone on?
Yeah, the zoning, will that put, be, will he be in compliance as far as zoning for what is established there now?
It's not really the structures that are there 'cause it's been the same the entire time. It's more the use. The use has changed without.
Gotcha.
Going through the entire process or ever getting permits. None of them have ever been permitted for the use that they are now.
Okay.
So that needs to be done as well.
Okay.
I couldn't hear what she said.
Well, she, she was saying that anything that's been done there, how long have you owned the property?
About 12, 13 years.
Okay, so have you got permits for any of the work that you've done?
Yeah, the work was already done. I mean, I've done a little bit of stuff around there, but that, that place was just the way it was when I bought it 13 years ago. I forget, there was a car lot, there's a bunch of things over there, and then I bought it and everything was there the way it was.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm just trying to get it rezoned residential. I put that body shop in there and then he was keeping it a mess and then he come over and got on me. And then I'm the one that told him about the building at 321. I told him what was going on over there and they said, well, I didn't get zoned right, so. I don't know what's going on, I'm just trying to get it right.
If this is rezoned, I mean, am I understanding though, his current use would not be consistent with what's gonna be rezoned here, is it? Are you saying if this, if this goes through, will his use be, now be consistent?
What is being used as now?
All of the state residential.
So my sense is there's two separate issues. There's a zoning issue, but then separately, there may be some.
There's additional violation.
Junk type violations as well, and those are separate, right, okay. So I think the issue before City Council is this is currently being used for something that is not zoned, so this ordinance will get it into compliance for what it's currently used for. Separately, he has other issues with APC regarding junk and whatever else type of violation.
What's it being used for?
For you guys, it's pretty simple.
Yeah, so what we're dealing with today is not any other issues you have with the property, other than it's not zoned right.
Right.
So we can get it zoned right for you today.
That's what, that's all I need.
Yeah.
I think the issue that we circled back to last month was that this is the second time it's been rezoned for being used for something that it's not permitted for or zoned appropriately.
I understand this, when this rezoning goes through, you're approved for what you're doing there now. If you change your mind and wanna do something else, you need to go back to them.
I don't know what they're talking, my son, I've got race cars over there and garages all got race cars in them. They belong to my son. My son lives in the house.
Right.
I've got race cars there. I don't know what they're doing. They said something about my trailer parked out there. There's a trailer parked there, but that trailer's not for commercial use. It's just a trailer for all the race cars. So, I mean, I've got race cars parked in there, but that's not a business.
Well, we're not here to talk about any of those issues that you have with the area plan. You still have to come in compliance with those.
Okay.
But what we're here to do is to get it zoned correctly, so that at least you're in compliance.
That's what I'm trying to do.
With, with the zoning. Your other issues, you still have to deal directly with them. And I don't know what their issues are, but you should have letters for all of it. And if you don't understand it, go to their office and they'll explain it to you, okay?
Fine.
All right, sorry.
Are there any other questions, Councilman Burton? Were you potentially gonna?
Oh, I, I'll just say this. The, the aim is to make sure that you are staying in compliance, but then that all, this, because this goes through does not mean that fines will not still be issued if your property is not in compliance.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions, comments from council? Okay, any questions, comments from the audience regarding this matter before council? All right, and.
I got a question. Who's she representing? I mean, who's, where's she, off of, she from?
She is part of the Area Plan Commission, so.
Area Plan Commission, okay. Okay, I'm good.
Yep.
And I just wanna reiterate, make sure that all the, all the letters that are sent, make sure you respond because the fines get higher when you don't respond.
Okay.
And, and what I'll say is, whether it's APC or Code Enforcement or Building Commission or a lot of these departments, they are always willing to work with people as long as communication is being had. If you, if you ghost them, you go dark on them, they only can take one action.
I have, somebody down in the office, I don't know who it was. She, they had a couple of things there and she said she excused it or whatever. I didn't have to do no fines or stuff. And I talked to them, so I mean, yeah, I have talked to them. So I don't know where, I've never talked to her, but I've talked to other people down in that office, so I don't know what's going on.
Okay.
I don't have a clue. I'm just trying to get it rezoned right and do whatever I need to do.
All right, I think, Madam Clerk, we're ready to take that roll call vote.
All right. Councilwoman Mosby?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey?
Aye.
Councilman Bean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hieronymus?
Aye. There being six ayes and zero nays. Ordinance R-
Ordinance R 2023-08, an ordinance to rezone certain real estate in the city of Evansville, state of Indiana, more commonly known as 3508 Stringtown Road.
Is there a motion to, are we on 08? Okay, wait, okay. Oh, that's because we pushed that one over. All right. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance R 2023-08?
So moved.
Having a first from Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey, a second from Councilwoman Mosby. Floor is now open to discussion of this item among Council Cassie.
Okay. This one's document number REZ-2023-007, proposed ordinance R-2023-08. Jonathan Miller, on behalf of JPV Estates LLC, is requesting to rezone the property located at the southwest corner of Stringtown Road and Harton Drive from C1 to R1 to allow permitting for a single-family residential use only and bring the property into compliance with the zoning code. This site is located in an area of all residential use surrounding the border of the golf course at the Evansville Country Club. Most of the property in the immediate vicinity of this site is zoned R1, including the golf course, with the exception of the multifamily residential developments zoned R3 and R5 at the end of Harton Drive to the west. The two structures on this lot were both built for residential use. The larger main residence constructed in 1925 and the smaller dwelling unit in 1954. According to the city directory, the smaller dwelling was converted to a beauty salon in 1963. The site was then rezoned from R1 to C1 in 1977 to bring the property into compliance and allow the existing business, and that was ordinance R-77-101. Very busy year for rezonings. Following the initial rezoning, the main residence was considered to be legal nonconforming until it was also permitted for commercial use as a chiropractor's office in 1991. Both structures have been permitted for various low-intensity commercial uses since that time, including retail, service, and professional offices. On July 18, 2022, APC staff received a complaint regarding the parking and storage of multiple unlicensed commercial vehicles, including an RV and enclosed transport trailers in the parking area on this site. Following inspection of the property, APC staff was made aware that the structures on this site had been converted for residential use and the permitted commercial businesses were no longer in operation. A violation letter was issued to the property owner on July 29, 2022 for the unpermitted change of use to residential. Upon contacting APC staff, the applicant was presented with optional processes for bringing the property into compliance and subsequently filed this downzoning request. In order to permit residential use of this site, the applicant must bring the property into full compliance, including removal of all signage, removal of the commercial parking area, and installation of the required green space. Comments received from the city engineer read as follows. Please note that this office endorses this rezoning, however, residential drives are limited to a 20-foot width maximum. Should this petition be approved, the petitioner and owner should establish a compliant residential drive in lieu of allowing the existing 76-foot wide commercial parking area to be accessed. The commercial parking area is on private property, but it is fully accessible from the public right-of-way. The 2035 future land use map recommends this site for residential use, and this request for downzoning to R1 is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This request for rezoning now comes forward from the area plan commission with a recommendation for approval having 10 affirmative votes. Don't see the petition.
Any comments or questions from council?
Mr. President, this is my ward. I'm very familiar with the property. I used to get my hair cut there, I guess, back in 1970. No, I wasn't born in 70, yes, I was. But I know there's a residential use now because I stopped for the school bus the other day. Nobody has contacted me about this, but I am in favor of zoning it to R1.
And this one was pretty simple. The only issue and the, the property manager who rents out the existing residence now is aware and they're totally on board with compliance, but that parking area that backs out into the right of way, they will have to turn that back into green space and make it just a normal residential drive.
We'll keep an eye on it.
And there's still.
It's hard to turn in there, that's terrible.
There's still a big poll sign at the corner and they'll have to take that down as well.
All right, thank you.
Any comments or questions from the public regarding this? Okay. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Mosby?
Aye.
Councilman Burton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey?
Aye.
Councilman Bean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hieronymus?
Aye. There being six ayes, zero nays, ordinance R 2023-08 is hereby declared adopted.
Ordinance R 2023-09 amended, an ordinance to rezone certain real estate of the city of Evansville, state of Indiana, more commonly known as 4411 Pollock Avenue.
Is there a motion to accept the amendment for ordinance R 2023-09?
So moved.
Second.
Having a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance R 2023-09 amended?
So moved.
Second.
Having a first from Councilwoman Mosby, second from Councilwoman Kayla Lindsey. Cassie, take it away.
Okay. Last one I have for you is document number REZ-2023-009, proposed ordinance R-2023-09. Nimish Shaw is requesting to rezone 0.75 acres of property located on the south side of Pollock Avenue between Burdette Avenue and Kimmore Drive from C1 and R1 to R2 to allow sale of the real estate for single-family residential use. This site is located in a predominantly residential use area with R1 zoning throughout. Commercial uses in the greater surrounding area include the commercial corridor at South Green River Road several blocks to the east. However, the only existing commercial use in the immediate vicinity is a gas station and convenience store located at the corner of Pollock and Burdette Avenues, a few lots over to the west from the site. This site was rezoned from R1 to C1 in 1984 to bring the property into compliance and allow an existing fruit and vegetable stand that had been operating in violation of the zoning code. This rezoning request was sent forward by the area plan commission with a recommendation that it be denied. However, the city council voted to approve five yes to no. Despite the approval from city council, no permit for the produce stand was ever issued, nor for any other commercial use. The single-family residence on this lot was permitted to remain as a legal nonconforming use in a C1 zoning district. The applicant purchased the property in 2019 and now proposes to downzone this site to allow sale of the real estate for single-family residential use. The applicant has been informed by APC staff that only one access drive will be permitted with the existing 99-foot of road frontage, and the access must be in conformance with today's zoning code. During the public hearing by the area plan commission, the applicant reported that the property is now in compliance, having only a single residential access drive. The applicant also clarified their request for an R2 zoning classification is to allow flexibility for any future property owner to utilize the larger lot size for a duplex residence if desired. The 2035 future land use map recommends this site for residential use. The proposed zoning request to allow for residential use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This request is consistent with the following policy in the residential section of the comprehensive plan, which states promote, facilitate, and sustain efforts in the preservation, maintenance, and rehabilitation of neighborhoods. This request for rezoning now comes forward from the area plan commission with a recommendation for approval having 10 affirmative votes.
Any comments, questions from council?
The petitioner is here if you have any questions.
No. Mr. Shaw?
My name is Nimish, and that's a rental property that I'm trying to sell. And the reason for selling it because it's right now in two different, two different parts. It's, I think it's a commercial on the back and it's residential on the front, and it needs to be one-zoned.
Any comments, questions from council?
I've not heard any remonstrators on this one, and with him trying to sell it, it does need to be one or they can't get along or anything on it, so.
Expert here.
If there's no other comments or questions from the public or council?
Oh, we have someone here.
Oh. Who? Oh. Regarding this? Okay.
You can come to the.
Sir, you're gonna, yeah, you're gonna have to come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Carrie Butler, my address is 4425 Margie Beth Avenue.
Can you, there you go.
Carrie Butler, 4425 Margie Beth Avenue.
Okay.
My house sits right behind this property, and I've never been here before, so I'm trying to truly understand what you mean by change it from a zone. And when I Googled it, R2 means that it can go up to a multi-home resident or a fire department or whatever station where it's right, where it is right now, it could just be a single home, correct? Am I saying that correctly?
I think it's zone C1 right now, so C1 is actually a commercial zoning, and Cassie, I don't know if.
So it doesn't allow for any residential use?
It does not allow.
So.
And so we're trying to switch it over to a residential use?
Just to bring it into compliance. It was zoned that way long ago.
We call this a downzone, so it's from a less intensive use of commercial to residential because it is used residential now. So most banks require you to be properly zoned to get financing, and so this is zone C1. It's being used as residential. So he wants to rezone it to how it's currently used as residential so he can be able to sell it.
I understand.
But I think the one question that you're asking is the R2, so why?
Why R2 instead of?
Why, why R2 instead of R1?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that's a, Cassie.
He just wanted flexibility for sale of the property so that if someone in the future, it is a larger lot, so if someone in the future wanted to turn it into a duplex, they would have that option.
Okay.
But it would make it also more than just a duplex.
Yeah, no, you can't, R2, you can't have anything larger than two.
Yeah, larger than two.
Well, I just know that that's gonna be, my front yard is that backyard.
They would still have to comply with all of the same developmental standards that are in place right now. The same development standards apply to R1 versus R2, just they can have two dwelling units within the one structure.
So, to kind of talk, do you, go ahead.
So, they could put another single-family structure there or a duplex?
It could only be a duplex. You can't have more than one structure under R2. You'd have to go up to R3 to get multifamily and have more than one structure.
So I do understand his concern because then that would take it out of compliance because it would be residential and then they could put a duplex there in just a residential area.
No, it would just be one structure and two units. So either the existing single-family residence could be converted to two units, or if they wanted to add on and convert that to two units, they would still have to get it permitted and make sure that they're following all the standards that they're supposed to. But with the larger size of the lot, they wanted more flexibility for the sale.
So according to definition, it says, single-family, two families, three families, four families, multi-families.
You might not be looking at our specific zoning code. So other municipalities may have different definitions for their classifications, but ours, it's R2 only allows up to duplex, and it doesn't allow any commercial use unless it's a home occupation, which also has to be permitted.
So, so if I'm hearing you correctly, so even if we voted to pass the R1, R2 today, they would still have to come before us to make it a duplex? If that's the pathway they chose?
No. So actually, this is a mixture of C1 and R1, and he cannot resell it for residential use, which is what it's being used as, until it's in compliance. So it has to be rezoned, period. He's asking for R2 so that whenever he's marketing it for sale, that the future owner has more flexibility depending on what they want to do with the property. But not changing anything about what's there at this time, just trying to resell it.
Can we layer on?
Buyers can't get financing without it being in compliance.
And with the current, with the current property, he could tear the house down and put a business in that would qualify.
With the way it is now, yes, because technically, if they did anything to it, then they wouldn't be legal nonconforming with the residential use anymore, so it couldn't be used as a residence. So if they wanted to add on to the residence, they'd then be in violation.
But could we just do it as an R1?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be okay with it going to an R1.
If you're a neighbor, you want to get rid of that ability to put a commercial property, a commercial business in there. I think this is, while it could become a duplex, that's a lot better neighbor than a, than a convenience store or, you know, liquor store or something like that. So I, you know.
But R1 wouldn't allow a duplex.
It needs to be, I would, I would like to make, see if it can be amended just in R1 and not in R2.
I don't think there's any need for that. Well, I mean, that's, you can try that.
But the neighbors don't want a duplex there.
That's right.
The neighbors want to keep the residence.
Well, they may.
I'd not want a duplex there, I want a single home.
They're okay with an R1 being a residential.
Well, let's just say this.
But why allow the opportunity?
Hey, guys, hold on, hold on, real quick here, real quick here. Yeah, I, I, we have to ask a procedural question because I don't even know if we're legally allowed to downgrade the zoning in this particular meeting. I think it has to go back to APC. Yeah. And if, if, you know, if that's the case, then I think we need to make the decision to, I don't know, what procedurally from that standpoint, what do we do? We just?
You would, you would vote, if you want to go that route, you would vote R1, but that becomes a recommendation that goes back to APC. They vote and it comes back to you.
Yeah. I mean, the problem is, if you say he has to, he would like to be able to sell it and get more flexibility with the ability to put a duplex in there, but if we take that away and he can't find somebody that wants to put a duplex there, then he just drops this and then tears the, he could tear the house down and have somebody come in and put a business because it's zoned for that. So that's the risk that you're putting yourself in is that if you say no to a duplex, which is just a little bit bigger building than what's there, is that the lesser evil than if you don't do it and then he decides to put, you know, whatever grocery store, whatever kind of business that will be paved up to within 20 feet of your property?
It may not even have to be any bigger of a structure because the residence that's there is pretty sizable right now, so they could convert that to a duplex if they wanted to ideally.
So I'm not against it becoming an R1 because that makes it 100%.
Yeah, I understand your position.
Family.
I'm just saying that drawing that line in the sand puts you in a position where he could decide that he'll just leave it with how it is and put a commercial operation in there and.
I thought he said he wouldn't have a problem with a hard one, right? You don't have a problem with a hard one, right?
I have, I'm tangled in it. So here's the thing. So if someone were to buy this place.
I think she right here.
Sorry. If someone were, I mean, if I'm wrong, if someone were to buy this place right now and buy it as what it is right now and then want to make it a duplex, they would still have to go through the whole procedure of getting permits and getting all this, and they would have to, again, go back to the people around the surrounding area, get their input on it like today. So he would be able to come back to tomorrow, whenever they do, if they did, and do what he's doing right now, you know, give his opinion on not doing it and the reasons why. So it doesn't mean that if he's getting, if I'm getting R2 right now, it's gonna happen without his permission. He's still gonna have to approve it if someone changes it in the future. Would that be fair?
What about a downzoning to an R1 and not the R2? What, what about a, a down zoning to an R one and not the R two?
What's the timeframe on doing that? Do we have to start from zero?
Two more months.
Yeah.
Two more months?
Yeah, because it will have to go back to APC and then back to us.
Here, here are the options. This council could do nothing. He could tear that building down. He could put a gas station up, not a gas station, but a commercial lot up there.
Actually, a great story.
On the other hand, you know, you could pass this tonight. He could turn it into a duplex or a single residence, but I understand there could potentially be some concerns with even R two as a duplex. The downside with that is the current property owner has to wait two months before he's able to sell it. So I, you know, there's pros and cons either way. Those are the options.
I will say that this was passed 10 to nothing in, in Area Plan Commission, but this gentleman was not there for that, so he may not have known about it or didn't realize it. But, um, were you at the Area Plan Meeting when this was approved?
On the fourth. This letter, huh?
It was on April.
I'm sorry, yeah, we got two letters, yeah, six.
Sir, can, sir, can you speak?
I'm sorry, I was not in the city. I was on vacation.
I didn't, I didn't remember from that. I, that's not to say you weren't there.
When I got home, I seen the letter, so I, this is the only time I could get here.
Okay.
Was today.
Okay.
So I'm, now, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look at it from, from your perspective. Obviously, best situation is it's, it's R one. But I guess the larger conversation is duplex versus vape or whatever goes in. What? If he can't wait for two months, then you have to go with what she's recommending, I guess, because I really form to change the R two than leave it as is based off what you're telling me.
Yeah, and I, I think there's something that was said before that regardless, if we rezone it to R two, whatever someone comes in that says they want to change it to that, they still have to go back through the Area Plan Commission and go file their paperwork and go do all that. And so you'd have times to remonstrate it against them. I mean, we're at the point where we're, we need to vote on this, on this. And, I mean, I, I don't, I don't have an issue with supporting this rezoning. I just think that.
I, I gotta, I have a question because if, if we rezone this as R two, they don't have to go back through the process because appropriate use development is what it will be.
Only if they're gonna go outside the development standards, like no yards or larger structure.
Okay, my bad, I missed that.
Then they would go in front of the BZI and again, they would have to send out the letters and he would have the opportunity to speak on that part. But if they're gonna stay within the development standards, which are the same pretty much as R one, then they wouldn't have to go, they would still have to get a permit for the conversion, but that would be it.
So Cassie, I have a quick question. So why, why did Area Plan do an R two on this when all this is R one in that area?
Whenever the property owner came to us and was discussing the rezoning so that they could sell, they were wanting the most flexibility but remaining low-density residential, which we let them know would be R two because you could put a duplex in there but nothing larger.
So it just, it just concerns me because I, I lived on Pollock and there's a lot of duplexes on Pollock that are terrible. And I would hate to see that for this neighborhood.
Well, I mean, I will say that the house is probably 75 or 100 feet away from the road and it has a big horseshoe drive, which that eliminates a lot of that back and out. But once again, we have concerns from a neighbor that we need to take into consideration.
Thank you.
You know, the, the other property we had on Pollock and we were debating on rezoning that, that was a, a small lot and that it was gonna, the footprint was gonna cover 40% of that lot. This is a lot that's, it, it's not even, the house probably doesn't cover 5%, maybe 6% or 7% of that lot. I mean, there's a lot of distance between them, but that doesn't alleviate, you know, neighbors' concerns. I mean, you're always worried anytime you get a new neighbor. But, yeah. And, yeah, anyway, I said my piece.
So Cassie, Mr. Chairman, Cassie, why does it have to take two months? There's, there's no way to do it any quicker than two months?
No, they'd have to amend the petition and I believe our amendment deadline, yeah, our amendment deadline for May has already passed. So they would have to go to the June APC meeting and then come back here at the end of June in front of you all. So then he wouldn't be able to move forward with the sale until after that.
Well, and, and Cassie, just to kind of clarify, the reason why we have this is because the city and APC is required statutorily for notifications, not just to the public, but to the neighbors. And, and those letters don't just come from APC, they actually come from the petitioner, right? And it, I mean, it's a, it's a process, right?
And very costly.
Yeah. What, what I'll say is, this counselors, is I, I do understand and recognize the concern of the neighbors. I think this lot is tremendously unique when you look at it because of the length of it. And while R two may not be the most ideal, you know, you have general, it has to be one building, right? We have general setback requirements as far as our building code requirements, right? You know, and that's anywhere from 10 feet from neighbor to neighbor to 20, I think it's 25 feet from, you know, the, the driveway or, you know, the frontage road to the front of it. So, I mean, if you think about that, you know, where this, where the proposed development would probably happen if they bulldozed this and decided to build something would be a lot farther up than the, the structures then where they are and reside today.
That blue house right there is my house.
Is that yours? Okay. Oh, so you come off the end of Margie Beth?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So you can see how that would be that close to my house if it became a duplex.
Well, so if, if you can scroll down a little bit, I actually equate the property next to it, if you see directly to its right of 2023-009, the R, you know, the, the red part. And there's a tremendous amount compared to what, what it is there. Our, our building standards would really require that building to be more up in the front, you know, without variance.
There's also a 25-foot rear yard setback for R two.
Okay.
How many?
25 foot.
Right. So they couldn't come any closer than 25 feet to you, the back of the building?
But we still think about the backyard and how it's gonna look in compared to my front yard. You know, most people don't take care of backs as good as they take care of the front. And we're talking about two months where once we decide and the duplex go there, I gotta live there. I'm trying to retire there, you know? I got more than just two months. I got years on top of years.
Yeah, I, but I think.
There's currently a six-foot privacy fence there. Mr. Shaw's confirming it still in, in place.
I mean, realistically, that, if someone wanted to put a duplex there, they're gonna convert what's already there. But I understand your concern. It's theoretically possible to bulldoze and put a new duplex in, but I think what Cassie's trying to say is it's not gonna, without getting an additional permit, it can't be too much bigger than what it already is. And it's gonna have to have these setback requirements that are being discussed right now.
Better be a smaller family, less people.
You're, you're exactly right.
You know, less.
Absolutely.
Heartaches. Because we understand where duplexes pull in, type of duplexes pull in, type of people they pulls in. That's what I'm referring to.
I, I couldn't hear some of that, I'm sorry.
About how a duplex, type of a people that it pull in. A single family is gonna be better quality people.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I would argue that single families are living in duplexes just the same. I mean, it depends on.
At least it'd be warm.
Huh?
At least it'd be just warm.
Right, but I mean, you have, I mean, you have, you have, you have communities, you know, and different types of neighborhoods. And, I mean, I, I would probably say if they turned this into a duplex, probably couldn't accommodate two families, but you could also build a townhome that could accommodate two families there as well, right? And, you know, structure-wise and however it was developed and, you know, designed, could accommodate families. I mean, that's, you know, I, some families can only afford to, you know, rent instead of own.
You know, I'm really torn on this because I, I wish, I wish they would have just downgraded from the, the commercial to an R one to be fair to that neighborhood. You know, I.
No, I, I, I mean, in a perfect world, everybody's happy, right? And, and so when, we deal with all the time when an area plan, you just learn when any time a rezoning comes through, that there are gonna be people that aren't, don't want the change and don't want that. And I get that. I, I totally get that because, you know, it's like, yeah, we, we want a, a, a big Walmart out here, not by my house, put it on the next road over. You know, I mean, that's, you know, and for me, I just think that if a commercial property went in there, you're, you're, the closest thing on your neighbor's property could be a dumpster. And I just don't, I think the prospects of that for me would be much scarier than a, a potential of that being expanded to a duplex.
I also forgot to add that C one, you can have apartments. So they could bulldoze that single-family residence and put up an apartment building if they wished to.
It could cover 40% of that lot with it.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm, uh.
So procedurally, can we skip over this for a minute and vote on the next two?
No, we gotta wait for Mrs. Magic back there.
No.
I'm, I'm just trying.
Well, I mean, the reality of it is, is the next two after this have, have been requested to table, so we don't have any business aside from our guests speaking.
So procedurally, while we're waiting, can, when we get to those two, can we make one motion for both of them?
Yeah.
She's back. Okay.
Councilwoman Mosby, what do you propose we do?
So I, I did speak to my constituents and I think it's very unfortunate that they're having to deal with not going to just an R one but an R two. But after discussing with them, they would much rather risk an R two than a possible apartment complex go there.
Yeah, that, I mean, the business, the business would, would be scary enough, apartment complex would be.
Yeah, but I, I really, I mean, this has put.
I, I appreciate you taking the time to talk to them so they could have their thoughts. And, uh, I, I think that's a prudent decision, really.
Any more questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none?
Councilwoman Mosby?
Again, I think it's very unfortunate, but I will vote in favor. I wish it was an R one, but I'll vote in favor.
Councilman Burton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kayla Lindsay?
Aye.
Councilman Bean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hieronymus?
Aye. There being six ayes, zero nays, ordinance R 2023-09 amended as hereby declared adopted. I would like to ask for a motion to just.
Motion to hold R 2023-10.
Well, but if we're, oh, do we need to accept amendments first?
Just procedurally, yeah, just acknowledge that amendment has been filed.
Oh, okay, so you, I make a motion to accept the amendment for R 2023-10.
Do I have a second? All right, having a first and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay.
Now I motion to hold ordinance R 2023-10 as amended until May 22nd, 2023.
Yeah, can I have a first?
Second.
No, can I have a first? I need a first.
I made the motion.
I think I'm running this meeting, I don't know anymore. I'm questioning myself.
I made the motion. I gave you the first, council.
Oh, okay.
That was what I was, I'm trying to.
All right, I got a first and then I've got a second.
I got ahead of you, sorry.
Councilman Bean, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, good deal. I'm a.
I'll be quiet and explain you do your job now.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the amendment for ordinance R 2023-11?
So moved.
Second.
All right, having a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So ordered, is there a motion to hold ordinance R 2023-11 amended until May 22nd, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All right, having a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, there we go.
Resolution docket, there are no items on the resolution docket?
The next meeting of the common council will be Monday, May 8th, 2023 at 5:30 PM. Next up, we have the Tree Board Annual Report from Sean Dickerson, our City Arborist. Sean, it's good to see you, buddy.
And Sean, each of them have a copy on their desk?
Yeah.
Yes, and if, if anybody doesn't have a copy, I've got plenty of copies here. So let me know, I'll stick around after the meeting if you need me to. So I will try to be as brief as possible. I know it's been a long meeting, you probably wanna.
Highly recommended.
But you can have your five minutes of fame.
Thank you very much.
And I hope that you're, is that your son back there waiting patiently with you?
Yeah, so if I have any opposition here, he's going for a Central High School defensive tackle in football.
There we go.
So I've got some eye on my side.
I'm, I'm just happy that he's going to the oldest republic high school, West Yalgany Mountains and continue his operation.
Thank you. He, he, he may, well, I'll, I'll get him some other day, but I got ways to go. I've been here for, this will be my 22nd year as City Arborist. And I'm very thankful to be part of this community. My family, we live in town and I'm not, I'm here on my own time tonight because not only do I love working for the city, but I love trees and I love making this city better by planting trees and keeping this city safe. And this is how we do it, with your support. And that's the other reason why I'm here. That's the main reason why I'm here is to keep your support and let you know what we've been doing and what we've accomplished and where we plan on going. So we, you know, to start off with, a lot of people think that all we do is educate and plant trees. That's probably only 10% of what we do. The other 90% of what we do is manage the city's street tree crew under the Transportation Services Department. Todd Robertson's my boss. And we make our streets safe. When we have storms like we had August 1st last year, we had 144 calls for trees down in that one storm. That doesn't include all the other storms we've had throughout the year that we had to respond to, to keep, to open up our streets from fallen trees or a fallen tree limb. That's what our city's street tree crew does. We also prune tree limbs up that are low that hit school buses, which protects our future generation. We also remove dead trees that are in street right-ofways. So if there's a dead tree in front of somebody's house in a right-ofway area, we have the right to remove that. And we will do that to protect the motorists using the street for transportation. So that's, that's 90% of what we do. But in that other 10%, we do a really tremendous job. So I do want to talk about Emerald Ashbore. So Anthony Moffett is here from True Green with his daughter. He's on his own time tonight and I thank him very much for being here. True Green works hand-in-hand with us and the Parks Foundation to develop, we developed an adopt an ash program to treat our ash trees in Evansville to keep them from dying from Emerald Ashbore. Emerald Ashbore is here now, it's been here for five to six years or more and is now killing all of our ash trees all across the city. If we don't do something to get our ash trees treated through donations and sponsorships, we're gonna lose all, we're gonna lose 67% of all of our public trees. We have found over 300 trees that we're trying to treat, that we're trying to get funds to treat, but it's not happening very well. We need sponsorships. If you know of a way that we can get sponsorships, preferably a big corporate sponsorship, that would be awesome. If you could help us find a corporate sponsor, if you could help us determine, figure out some way to get a big sponsorship or a lot of sponsorships to save our ash trees, it would be very helpful because right now we're having a tough, tough time. The COVID epidemic really ruined it for us for the last two years because everybody, you know, had other concerns for the last two years. And it's catching up to us now with our, with all of our not-for-profit things that we're trying to find funds for. It's not just us, it's everybody else. it's everybody else. Now, I do want to talk about our canopy goal initiative. So in, in last year, we removed sixty-six trees, and we planted 336. That came from our city tree nursery, which CenterPoint paid for trees to go into our tree nursery. We grow them, and we transplant them when they're a little bit bigger than saplings along our city's street, I'm sorry, tree wells downtown, and in parks, and other public locations. We have also received donations from Chester Ryecroft for tree planks in Garvin Park, and Karen and John Sennelly for tree planks in the city cemeteries. An outstanding donation there. And then we also have a tree mitigation program, where the tree advisory board, who reports to the Board of Public Works, who all of us, of course, work under, you know, your guidance and support, have a precedence of planting two-for-one trees, when trees are removed on public properties for public improvements. So we have exceeded that. So last year, our total numbers gave us five trees for every, planted for every tree that we removed. That's way over our precedence. We have been told that we are the only city in Indiana that's planting more trees than we remove. That's a big accomplishment. Since 2001, thank you.
I like that, too.
Thank you. That's not just me. It's, hey, it's all you. It's all you. So I'm just, I'm just the pig guy here. So, but I can't do it without support. Since 2001, we planted three trees for every tree that we removed since 2001, since the beginning of our urban forestry program, and the development of our tree board. That, that's over two-for-one. That's great. So on Arbor Day this year, which is this coming Friday at 11 o'clock at Westminster Woods, we're giving away trees to the public. Now, what's this do? Well, this helps us get trees planted in residential areas in the city, where we can't really plant very well ourselves. This will hopefully help us reach our tree canopy goal initiative that we have. Right now, well, in 2011, a study was done that shows that we have twenty-six percent tree canopy cover. And we're trying to get that somewhere between thirty and forty percent, which is a national standard for a community who's really has, who really has good urban forestry efforts, who wants a really good, clean, healthy community with a lot of trees. So we were trying to find alternative ways of doing that. And, you know, one is giving away trees to the public. So hopefully, they'll plant trees in their yards in appropriate places with, with a good information. Another way is neighborhoods. So we're going to be talking to neighborhoods soon about how we can work with them to help them develop ways to help their residents get trees planted on their properties, either through this giveaway, or maybe their own teepee park. Did a really cool initiative where they planted trees, and I think they planted somewhere around twenty-three trees in teepee park about one or two years ago, on their own terms and their own way, which was, was told was a success. Mount Auburn Neighborhood Association this year is doing a cost-share tree planting program for their residents, property owners. We want to expand that. We want to see what we can do to help neighborhoods develop these kind of programs, and we can give them guidance, and, and hopefully help, help them do what they need to do to help us increase our tree canopy cover. So we also have Jennifer Roll here, along with Jessica Spicer and Amanda Johnson. So they are here, and I don't know what the protocol is, but I think that they might want to say a few words when I'm done talking. But before I go any further, I want to say that they've been a big help in the last year. Just actually, in the last six months, they've been a big help. They've stepped up to the plate. Jennifer has stepped up the plate, and has put me in touch with somebody at the state hospital about planting trees, at Vogel Elementary School about planting trees, and other locations, Van Park Neighborhood Association, and more. And so we're developing connections to plant more trees across the city, especially in residential neighborhoods, where we have a tough time getting them planted. So I just want to give thanks to everyone. My office can't, my department, the Department of Urban Forestry, can't do it without your support. We can't get things done and made safe without your support for funding, for equipment. And we need to know where to focus on planting trees. Specifically, we're going, we're planning on applying for a grant, a cost-share grant, to do a tree canopy analysis to update the last one that was done back in 2011, which is, well, twelve years ago, eleven years ago. And so it's overdue. And if, anytime, as you know, anytime you go or go to do any public improvement, you've got to have the information in front of you. We don't have updated information in front of us, and that's what that cost-share grant's going to be for. So you'll probably see something in the budget for that for the next year. We're going to apply for it this year in hopes that we get the funding approved, so that we can proceed with doing that in 2024. All these things just work hand-in-hand. So we thank you again for your support. Again, Arbor Day this coming Friday, Westminster Park, 11 o'clock, 350 trees, one per person, first come, first served. I hope that we get a lot of trees planted in the city.
I got it. You done? I might ask you a question or two.
Yes.
What's it cost to treat an ash tree, to protect it against the bore?
Well, Anthony, you might want to come up and answer this question. I will say that it depends on the size of the tree.
Yep.
Anthony, do you, could you tell us what the price range is generally?
Sure. Anthony Moffett. I'm Senior Commercial Manager with True Green and Project Lead for the Adopt Nash Program. I, depending on size of the tree, we're looking at somewhere from $35 to potentially $500, depending on the size. And that's good for about two years, that treatment.
Oh, two years?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
And I, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I, I, I think Sean hit on the pertinent details very well. Something I would leave you with as far as this issue is concerned, because when you think about it, it's trees. It's just trees. But, you know, you could walk into any elementary, any elementary school here in town, and you could ask a child, what does, what do trees do for us? And usually, they'd say, well, you know, it takes in carbon dioxide, and it puts out oxygen, and it sounds great. But in the real world, how does that actually work? If you were looking at research from the likes of Dr. Jeffrey Donovan, who's a professor of economics with the Portland Forestry Service, he's conducted a number of studies into this insect and how it affects communities. And his research has shown, communities that have dealt with this issue with the emerald ashbore have, where they've lost wholesale trees, they've had issues with lower respiratory illness, they've had increases in negative birth outcomes, they've had all these offshoots that have affected people within a community health-wise. And when I read this, I said, you're crazy. People are not dying because trees are being cut down. This has since been replicated by Dr. Arunay Batnagar at the University of Louisville, where, to give you an idea of what he did, there was an elementary school in the city of Louisville beside a busy highway. And so what they did was, they took blood samples and urine samples from the children at the school, they then planted a bank of trees between the school and the highway. They came back a year later, and there was about seventy-five percent drop in the benzines and all the bad stuff that was in the blood and urine of these children. So it's not just trees we're talking about here. We lose all these trees. We lose 300 trees on city property. We'll lose potentially thousands and thousands on private property. What's it doing to us? Something to think about.
Thank you.
Sean, I did, I forwarded you, I just forwarded you an email. There is, the Department of Energy has a grant for urban forestry, forestry program. And that, sorry, the Zoom is tomorrow. But I wanted to make sure it was in your, in your, on your radar. And we can, I can loop you in on some emails there. But I think there's some opportunity to tap into federal funds between inflation reduction and the, what was the, Build Back Better. There are funds available for local municipalities to, yeah, there's, there's access to fund. So I sent you that email, and I'll make sure I send it to Jennifer, too.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burton.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sean, is it still true that if you cut down a Bradford pear, that the state will replace that tree for free?
No, I apologize.
Is that program over?
Unfortunately, that program is not available at this particular point in time. There has been talk about doing it again, but that was actually done through a local organization, SISMA, or the Soil and Water Conservation District. I can't remember, one of those two organizations or groups did that. It was a big success when they did it. We hope to do it, we hope that they'll do it again.
I thought you didn't want to plant Bradford pears.
No, no, we don't.
Oh, you get, give you a different one. It's not like replacement. I got you. Okay. Man, it's been a long day, and I, I am not comfortable.
Pear trees are public Emmy number one.
Yeah, awesome. Yeah, I know. It fell on my house. I think I told, shared that story at the last, last meeting. Sean, I greatly appreciate what you do in the, in the department. And ladies, I would love to hear from you, but we have one more presentation. It's been a very long, long night so far.
Well, I want to thank them for their support.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yep. Next up, we got a state legislative session pertaining to energy presentation from Christopher Norick with DACE. And then we'll be, and mad props to you, Chris.
Everybody shake it off. Shake it off. Shake it off. I hate to follow that amazing presentation.
We skipped the last meeting because it was a...
Correct.
Going to be a long meeting, and I did not anticipate this meeting turning into...
That's all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Christopher Norick, 2728. Harm anyway. I am representing DACE and the Energy for All Coalition today. Thank you, President Hieronymus, and all councilors for giving me the opportunity to kind of update you on what's happened in energy in the utility space. You know, it's been a while since DACE has come up and had public comments, so I was excited to catch you up. I'll click through these slides here. This is the Energy for All Coalition. If you weren't aware, we have several member groups that's been involved in this for over a year. We still meet every two weeks and discuss policy and strategy and, and all the issues that we've had in, in, in utilities. So you know it's going to be a great presentation when I start off with the definitions page. The main one I think you should concentrate on is recovery and relief. That's a term that utilities use quite often. That means that we pay for whatever that thing is. So they seek recovery. That means that we owe them some money. That's, that's the main one. You know, we talk about rate base and all those other things. It gets a little complicated. And we'll talk about some trackers here in a minute as well. I think you may all probably know IURC and OUCC, but the one I do want to point out is that legal term for intervener, because that's something I'm going to ask for at the end of the, at the end of the presentation. I didn't throw MISO on there. I don't, you probably don't know that one. That's the Midcontinent Independent System Operator. That's a multi-state nonprofit that kind of controls the grid in our part of the country. So they kind of determine projects, like big transmission projects, et cetera. So it's another group that you may not be super familiar with. So this is no surprise to anybody, but here is the current situation. This data came from a, not really a lawsuit, but a request from the IURC to continue collecting this that they were required to during the pandemic. And so they started it back up again in September of '22, and this goes through January of '23. Unfortunately, we won't get this data now only quarterly for the next two years. So this monthly detail that I think is very handy to have, we won't be getting that, especially since the moratorium on disconnect ended March 15. And so we're like right there where we could see a big jump in disconnections, and we won't really have that. It'll be aggregated in a quarterly report. So the main ones to point out, of course, those with sixty-plus days are rears. We've got over 5,000 of those. And this is CenterPoint South, not just Evansville. You know, it's in several counties in southwest Indiana. They owe two and a quarter million dollars, those folks do. There's another 1,200-something that are on active payment plans. They owe another $840,000. And the very last column is the one I call out quite often, is CenterPoint sends out over 20,000 disconnect notices every month, and have for every month on this list. And I assume will continue to do that, and probably more. So 20,000. That's a pretty, pretty big number. This is also IURC data. You know, this is not something I put together. They do collect this. This is a monthly survey. This is from January. And that shows you just kind of where we are in the other investor-owned utilities. Of course, you know, they have, CenterPoint has a large area of gas in central Indiana. And so that's called CenterPoint North. We are CenterPoint South. And just that kind of comparison there is, you know, we're spending $263 if you had a 200 therm bill in January versus they are spending 190. So it's a pretty big disparity, just to give you a sense of where we are in Indiana. This is on the gas side, of course. And so you hear this question often, right? Why are gas bills so high? One of the big ones that sort of started DACE and started Energy for All was the increased cost of natural gas. And that hit, there was a winter storm in Texas in '21. It was pretty famous. The market went insane. There was some, you know, Texas went into a deep freeze. They had a huge demand. Some of the refineries got shut down at the same time, and the price went to infinity. I mean, there was no circuit breakers. So, you know, a stat that I've often pointed out is CenterPoint paid in February that month as much as they normally spend for gas for an entire year. And they sought recovery for that. You know, we owe for that gas. And so that's sort of where that big spike hit, right as we were going into the '21 heating season. And of course, you, the war in Ukraine has kept the price also elevated and just a little bit out of whack for quite a while. And of course, that is one of the problems with having a fossil fuel commodity-based energy source. You know, it's subject to the whims of not, not local, we'll put it that way. So graphically, that's what that looks like. That area in gray, that was the payback period. So we were allowed to pay that back in 12 monthly installments. So that's that period right there. That's the 12 months of the year payback. And you can see the chart is still very elevated. And during the pandemic, we were down to about 52 cents a therm. And, you know, we were well over a dollar during that payback period, that those two winter paybacks. So that's when bills went nearly astronomical. And the double whammy is at the exact same time, in October of '21, new CenterPoint went through a rate case and was approved to go from a 16 cent to a 60 cent cost increase on distribution. That's more of the profit side of the equation. So that was 271 percent, almost a three times increase. You know, every therm, that's what you're paying. So that's, that's how we got to where we are on the gas side. Because we were, we were sort of used to the electric, right? Here's our electric rates. We've had the highest electric rates in the state since about 2007, 2005. We're the yellow line on top. I will point out that little cluster in the very right-hand upper corner, that's all the investor-owned. And all the ones sort of about half of what we pay are all municipal-owned. So once you take the, the profit side out, that's about what you pay. Now, I know that's a dream world of mine, that we would have public-owned energy, but that's, that's where we are. I do have a little box over there to note that we are due for a major rate case, electric rate case this year. And so that's the time where they come down, they have field hearings. I hope you all participate. We will all be participating. They take public comments, and we'll, we'll see how this all shakes out. Do that. Going real fast through this very complicated information. One of the main reasons that our electric has been so high is vectoring at the time. CenterPoint was very heavily invested in, in coal power, you know, almost 100 percent. And so back in 2005, they wanted, they made the decision to stick with that model, not to diversify. Where a lot of places were moving to natural gas, the price of that was coming down with fracking, and renewables were starting to come at that time. So there was a $500 or $500 million investment at that point. And there's also a, a cost of fuel associated. Of course, we do pay for the coal, and they do have some natural gas generation. So that's what's going on with that. So that's what's going on with that. And then we get to the trackers, and this is where the state comes into play. You hear this term, the trackers, also called riders sometimes. This is a chart from I U R C that shows how often that those hit. And what trackers really are is to take what they would normally build into a rate case that they do every eight to ten years, and it's pretty expensive to do one of those, and it's like a year-long process. They pick things out of that to be able to charge us for almost immediately. And so they keep adding to that at the State House, keep pulling more and more things out, and so that's what a tracker is. And of course, if you really want to get nuts, that's the definitions on Center Point's page. I'm sure you're all going to read that later. But practically, that's where they show up. None of you probably understand what this is. If you ask Center Point for an itemized bill, this is what you get. Now, this is my own fancy spreadsheet version that I've developed. But, I mean, they're, they're hidden. You don't see them. There's like four lines on your bill, you know, and, and two of them are total and taxes. There's all these other things built in that you don't ever see unless you ask for that itemized bill. And so that chunk in yellow, those are the trackers. Same thing on the gas side. I will point out, too, that always annoyed me a little bit. That's the normal temperature adjustment. I have yet to figure this one out. When temperatures are colder than normal, and normal means on that day, average over the last twenty years from the national weather data, they charge you a little bit less. But if it's warmer than normal, you get charged a little bit more. We've had a lot of warmer things happening lately. And so, for instance, on this is my own bill, there was a thirteen dollar and nineteen cent charge because it was a little bit warmer that month for free. I don't quite understand that one at all. And the other one is the Energy Efficiency Rider. It has two components. One of them is funds all of those rebates you would get if you go down to Home Depot and buy a high-efficiency whatever, or the Nest thermostats or the LED light bulbs. We all pay for that on our bills. So I encourage everyone to always use those, you know, because you've, you've funded that program. But the one right underneath that, the second part, is there's a revenue requirement that we also pay for because we're using less gas. So we funded the energy efficiency initiatives and we're also funding the lost revenue from Center Point not selling as much gas. So those two in particular really, really get to me. So that takes us to where we are. So, I mean, we've been here. We've talked to all of our congresspeople, all of our representatives. We figured out that most of this comes from the state, and so what did they do about it this year? You know I don't have good news. There was three pretty decent pro-consumer bills. SB forty was very simple. It extended the moratorium, if you qualify for lihe during the coldest winter months to the hottest summer months. That did not get a committee hearing. It was, it was killed. Two fifty-four was pretty extensive. It had all kinds of payback plans and it got rid of some of the fees involved for reconnection, put some consumer protections in place. Also, no committee hearing. It was dead. We'll point out three three five, it's tangentially related. It was the Climate Solutions Task Force. It was not new legislation. It establishes the first-ever Indiana climate task force to look at tornadoes we're having, the flooding we're having in our area, you know, and, and to come up with some solutions for that. That did get a hearing, but the chairman would not allow vote. So that was, that was killed. The two, and I call ten seventeen, or ten oh seven, pro, pro-consumer, that was the result of three years of summer task force. It was the Twenty-First Century Energy Task Force. It was a, you know, Indiana General Assembly Summer Study Committee that they, it took three years to develop. It did establish five pillars for I U R C. One of them is affordability, but it was not clearly defined what affordability actually meant. And it also established a rate-making policy, a new study on how to develop rates besides building things, because that's the main way that most utilities make their money right now. SB one one four, this could apply to Evansville. I know that we've had some issues here with this. They had a big issue up in Indy where a landlord was taking utility payments and then not paying them and just keeping the money. And they were almost to the point of shutting off several apartment buildings. They may even have shut them off. So this establishes a receivership program that can take those payments and, and pay the utility to not shut off water, electricity, whatever. So those were, those were the good ones. Some pretty anti-consumer. These two specifically do with CCR, which is Coal Combustion Residuals, AKA coal ash, which we have a lot of it around here. And they both overrode court decisions that essentially ruled in favor of the consumer and against the utility. And most egregious to me is SB nine, because a court case in February, this February, ruled against Duke. It was like a two hundred and something million dollar case. An amendment got put on a bill. It went through that process and in one week, went through conference, got approved, got sent to the governor, signed, and the very next day Duke put in a, a rehearing, a petition for rehearing on that case. So that kind of tells you who's in control up there. Fourteen seventeen deals with almost the exact same issue, and it was connected to SB nine. And that exactly the same way, it was another coal ash issue that was ruled against the utilities and then got essentially overturned by the legislature. So that's not, not great news. These three, fourteen twenty is kind of its own beast. If you've not heard of anything, you may have heard of fourteen twenty, because it, it pitted utilities against third-party folks that build transmission lines. And in this transition where we're building solar farms and wind farms that aren't in the traditional places where the coal plants were, you got to build very expensive transmission lines. We're talking billions. I think there's ten, ten billion already approved in Indiana with another twenty in the pipeline. And so that was the big fight on who is going to be able to build those. And so fourteen twenty gives right of first refusal and it did pass. It's with the governor. It'll probably, it may have been signed today. I'm not quite sure. So now the utilities will have a new monopoly over that portion. And when they build it, it goes into the rate case against consumers. Fourteen twenty-one and one seventy-six is maybe a new term, construction work in progress is what those do. And that turns the consumers into the bank. So normally, if they want to build new infrastructure, go to the bank, get evaluated, risks, all, all that's involved. Instead, it's even before a shovel goes into the ground, during planning phase, we start paying for those projects. So we assume all risk, which I think doubt we'll get a small nuclear reactor down here, but you never know. It's very lucrative. Those are super risky and if it never makes power, which does happen on some nuclear projects, we still owe. So that's what happens with those two. Not, not, not great. So nothing, nothing to really help the consumer. So some, some main near-term that's going to be coming up in the next few years. And I'll show you Center Point's plans. Several old coal plants are coming offline. We have to replace that generation and the downside is we still owe money on the coal plants because they were granted recovery to build those and then we're still paying them off. So we have to pay for the old. We have to pay for the new. There's new rules for cleaning up coal ash. There's a fifty million dollar case that Center Point has right now for Cully. We have to pay for those. Fair compensation for any kind of solar or even community-driven solar that's been defeated in the State House. And as shown with those two bills, any attempt by the courts to rule against the utilities has, has been overturned. So the transition's going to be pretty rough for the consumers. So this week, in just a few days, Center Point will reveal their new IRP plan. That's their Integrated Resource Plan. They have to update these over three years. It's a twenty-year plan. EFA participated in that process. It's a public process. They have, they had four meetings. The fourth one, like I said, will be this week. We'll see the results. But just to give you an idea of, of what they're doing, this was from the twenty twenty IRP plan that we're sort of stuck with right now. This is all the, the old coal plants. You can see they're pretty, pretty dang old. Several of them are coming offline this year or in the next two years. The, the two gas plants at AB Brown are there at the bottom. So those are approved, should come online in twenty twenty-five. And when I talk about transition, this is their own chart. This is the transition. We're going from seventy-eight percent coal to over fifty percent renewables and a bunch of gas added on. So that in, in three years, that's, that's pretty heavy. And like I said, we, we will be paying for that. So this is a few of those projects. You may have heard of a few of them, like the Posey County Solar. There's some scattered around up in Wheatland. So we'll see how, see how those all go. Like, we'll hear more this week. And then dollar-wise, this is what those projects cost, including this very top one, this two hundred million dollars in compliance for pipeline safety. So I don't know what's going on with our gas pipelines, but we owe two hundred and eighty million to make sure they're in compliance. There's that fifty million for the Cully cleanup. I don't, I've probably seen this in the paper, that three hundred and thirty-six million for an unknown size, an unknown location wind farm is on there. I would like to point out, you'll see BTA and PPA. BTA is Build Transfer Agreement. So another company builds it, Center Point buys it. That puts it in the rate base and we owe money on it. If it's a PPA, it's a Power Purchase Agreement where some third party builds it, then they just buy the power. Much better for the consumers in that situation because the infrastructure doesn't go into the rate base. So there's several of those solar PPAs on, on the plans. And the two AB Brown turbines are there at the bottom. And I think a figure that hasn't been talked about much is the twenty-seven million for the pipeline a year. So that's, it's going to hit us pretty soon. There was also Cully Three up in Moore County was out for almost a year. We had to buy power on the open market when it was down, and it also cost seven and a half million dollars to repair. They haven't asked for that money yet, but you, you know it's coming. And the final one on there is this, the state last year did attempt a pro-consumer move with the securitization of closing AB Brown, essentially refinancing the debt that we still owe at a lower interest rate. But we've all seen the interest rates and so I'm not confident this will actually save us money. It wasn't a whole lot. It was like a dollar to twelve dollars range. So we'll see how that goes. It was a pilot project just for AB Brown, and if it was successful, I assume they're going to send it out across the state. So solutions are, are few and far between. This is just some of the actions that DACE and EFA have done. Of course, lots of public comments to all the causes. We've sent letters to the Lieutenant Governor. Of course, Cages, Nehemiah Action last year was all about this issue. We've been, of course, city council many times, county council several times. We participated in that Twenty-First Century Task Force. We almost are always get a question in at Meet Your Legislators events to ask them what's going on. We developed that survey that we handed out last year on energy burden. So that's what's happening. And so for local gov, we need, we need help. I know you talked a lot about the IRA today, and there's going to be a lot of funds coming through the IRA that the city can directly access, which is pretty unusual. Also, nonprofits can access those now. You don't have to have a tax burden. That's pretty big. I really would love to see some pretty major outreach on the consumer side of the IRA. So that's going to be rebates for high-efficiency stuff. That's the main one. You know, there's a lot of money to upgrade some of your appliances. And of course, that's for homeowners. And so the whole rental side is still, that component is missing. And so I also have on here that Bloomington recently had a resolution on Project Forty-Six. I don't know if you've seen that. It's a collaboration between Bloomington, Nashville and Columbus. And that's exactly what it was made for. It was to access IRA funds for some of their smaller towns in that area. I would love to see some kind of robust city low-income weatherization program because weatherization brings down usage. And you bring down usage, you bring down costs for the homeowner. Of course, my, my dream is, you know, to turn it into a public utility. That would be amazing. It's not an unknown concept. We have them all over the state. It's absolutely something that can happen. And finally, if you can get on officially as an intervenor to any I U R C rate cases as the city, I think that would go a long way and to getting your voice into the room. That's what I got. I know it's been a long night.
Chris, I appreciate you coming in, updating us on this. And obviously, we're right around the corner for some additional meetings with, with the rate case. And I know that, I think you and Councilman Bean have been talking about some weatherization. And I know that the House group has been talking about weatherization and, yeah, so. There's a lot to be done. I appreciate you.
All right. I appreciate you all. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. There are, are there any additional comments from council now? Are there any additional? Any additional comments from members of the audience this evening? Hearing none. We have no committee reports and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Having a first? Do I have a second? Second, all right.
Y'all can talk and walk at the same time, right?
Aye. Meeting adjourned at eight fifty PM.